I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protam Weyrich.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here tonight.
Oh, that's good. Okay, we have a quorum. Pledge of Allegiance. Matt, would you like to lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to prove the agenda as presented. I'm being given a blizzard of cards here.
Late arrivals.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Let us begin. We're going to start with a proclamation for a person who is no stranger to this building. Deborah, are you out there? Ah, come on up.
Well.
Deborah Pendrey.
What am I doing?
Well, come on up, I'm going to present a proclamation to you. I'll do it from here and then I'll come out and give to you.
Okay.
For those who are regulars here, they know Deborah, who was a regular here from the Green Coalition. She has been the executive director over there for, what, close to nine years, or was it a nine?
Nine plus, yeah.
Nine-plus years. She is retiring, but she's not going away. She is noted for her collaborative skills in the community of getting people to work together individually as well as groups, which is no easy task in this town. You can find the groups, getting them to work together is a little more difficult. Deborah, your friends say that one of the things that they really admire about you is getting out the word, and it is reputed that you have addressed the city council some 100-plus times.
Wow.
Right, so that would kind of make you the town crier, as I would distinguish from the town whiners, because we have competition in that category. Deborah is noted for her passion for earth-friendly decisions, policies of the community, all the way from building materials to making sure that the, one of the things near and dear to my heart, all of the batteries that we find, a lot of them, if you walk this town, I don't know if people use them in their listening devices, or what do you call it? I guess Sony doesn't have players anymore, but there are batteries literally strewn around this town, and what do you do with them? But because of Deborah's efforts, we have a place here in town, it's not cost-effective, but it is very environmentally friendly, for which I am greatly appreciative. Another thing, that I have been sort of the trash picker of the town for probably 40 years, cleaning up the streets, and one of the really great advancements we've made in this town is when we got rid of the single-use bags. I know a lot of people aren't happy with that, because they have to remember to bring a bag with them to the store, but if you're ever out around walking in the old days, they were, every cyclone fence in town had a blanket of them when the winds would come up. So that is a lasting contribution to the community. Solar energy, I'm told that you're helping promoting solar energy in town. I don't know much about kilowatts, but they say over 300 kilowatts are generated in the town through solar panels, which is a great thing. And the membership in the coalition was roughly 200 people when you started in, and now there are over 1,000, is that true?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, good.
On the email database not supporting.
Oh, okay, well, you have a chance to make a pitch for that. Okay, well, thank you for all of your help, both in the past and what we expect from you in the future, in a different capacity.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this gets you at Starbucks, but I'm sure they'd be glad to see you. Thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you.
And for coming down and keeping us informed on a regular basis.
Thank you. I continue to do that. So I'm just going to say a couple of things. I don't know who put you up to it, but thank you for the kind words. And it was a lot of OJT, on-the-job training, making it up every day, but because I've got an opinion about just everything, just about everything, it worked out well. I have a great sense of humor, that helped a lot. And so I'm going to share, I have done 100-plus city council meetings, but I have to share a couple of my favorites. First one was Steve Olson was mayor. I came in, I was representing myself for this, it was World Population Day coming up, and I came in with a basket of condoms that had endangered species messages on them. And I shared that, you know, they were available, and I'd be at the farmer's market, and Steve Olson says, Deborah, I never know what's going to come out of your mouth when you get up there. The second time, I don't even remember the year, it's Kale Starbird, a bunch of people came here to, we were promoting energy conservation. Kale gets up, pulls a dollar bill out of her pocket, and proceeds to light it on fire, which none of us knew was going to happen, it was kind of like, and she said, my father used to say, if you leave the lights on and you do this and you do that, you're just burning money. And that kind of threw us all off, that was a really cute one. Anyways, it's been great.
Federal regulation, I'm sure, of some sort.
Yeah, it didn't seem right, but you know, we all kind of went with the flow on it, because she's so awesome. So anyways, thank you, I am not going away, just kind of stepping back a little bit, and in fact, I'll be back up for public communications. So it's been grand, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition is a fabulous organization in this community, starting around 2006, and we need to support them and have them around for many years to come. Thank you again.
Mayor Johnston, as the president of the Green Coalition, could I just say a couple of words about Deborah?
Sure.
Just as a presentation. In my experience, as we present and present proclamations to people in the community, it's always nice to acknowledge all the work that they've done, and I think the majority of us in this room have seen Deborah. When I first started getting interested to be elected official, this is where I met Deborah. And every meeting I went to, she was there, but earlier. I thought she was going to be my competition for that seat that year, but I'm glad she wasn't, because she really does love this community, but she also loves the earth, the soil that we're in, and we truly do miss her at the Green Coalition, because she wore so many hats, she did so much. I hope that people understand that she definitely was the pillar of that organization when she was there, she really did give her heart and soul to the organization, and I'm excited that right now we have a new, fairly young board, and we're just trying to follow her steps, and trying to do and continue the good work that Deborah has laid down for us. So we really do appreciate her, and she well deserves this proclamation. So thank you, Mayor, city council members, staff.
Thank you, Sebby. Okay, we have a presentation from our chief, James Freihoff.
It's going to be this little device I take it? Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, my boss, city manager. So the, I know annually we give a report on where we're at with our crime stats and what happened over the past year, so I'm going to give you a quick snapshot on what your 2016 looked like, which was your previous chiefs last year, which was a very, a very good year. Am I pushing the wrong one? Up arrow?
This goes forward, now it goes backwards.
Forward, orange button. There we go. Okay, so this is a comparison over the last three years. This is a 2014, 15, and 16. As you can see, the numbers in 2014, if you look at the total Part I crimes, which are the most serious offenses that we have, which are your homicides, rapes, robberies, aggravated assaults, your burglaries, both residential and commercial, and the different theft categories as well as arson. Back in 2014, there was 120 total Part I crimes. Then in 2015, it dropped significantly, almost in half, to 66, and then, I take that back, I'm going to work my own, it was 130, and it dropped to 73, and then it was maintained at 73 again in 2016. There was just a little switch between the crimes that were crimes against persons versus properties, and there were three difference each, but the total number remained the same of 73. So those are phenomenal numbers for a city, a lot of that I attribute to the fact that this city is very connected. They talk to one another, they're very engaged, I monitor most of the social media posts, and I know that everybody is concerned for everybody else, they don't hesitate to call us if they see something out of the ordinary, and for a city this size, it's pretty easy to see something that's out of the ordinary, and we encourage people to call, so that we can get involved before we do have any crimes, because the crime is not just a number on the sheet, it comes with a victim, with the trauma of being a victim, the cost of being a victim as well. So it's really important for people to look out for their neighbors, and I think this community does a fantastic job of doing that. It's just a different representation of how those numbers look. So you can see over the, since 1991, this is the crime trends since, over the last 25 years or so, and you can see it's been a marked trend downwards, to our lowest point in 2016. So the one thing that I just want to be, you know, cautious of, you know, optimistically cautious about, is that just two years ago, it was our Part I crimes were double what they were over the last two years. So just because they're low, I don't want us to get a sense of, okay, we don't have crime, there's nothing to worry about. What I would like us to do is always remain vigilant, pay attention, and continue to do the good work, working with the law enforcement in your community. We're here to help you, here to serve you, and we want to do our best to keep these numbers at zero, is our goal, of course. So Part II offenses, which are also serious offenses, but not in the category of the Part I crimes, these are your simple assaults, your sexual offenses that are not rape, your felony vandalism, misdemeanor vandalism, and all other reported crimes, which, public drunkenness and other associated crimes. So there was an increase last year from 82 to 101, so it was a 23% increase in the number of crimes that we had, mostly was driven by vandalism and some simple assaults. The simple assaults can be domestic violence-related, and obviously the vandalisms can be anything from window smashings to tires being slashed, et cetera. So we need to be, make sure that we're constantly paying attention to these as well. If you're seeing something that, like I said, doesn't look right, please call right away. So over the last five years, from 2011 to 2016, the total combined Part I and Part II crimes in 2011 was 419, and then in 2016, the combined was 174. That's a pretty good drop in Part I and II combined crimes in the city area, and by comparison, and even in the county unincorporated area that I'm responsible for as well, there was a drop from 760 to 366. So for our arrest categories and arrest stats, all of our arrests, we made 58 fewer arrests last year than the year before, but 484 in 2015 compared to 426 in 2016. The numbers there at the bottom, you have the drunk driving, we made a few, you know, eight fewer DUI arrests, the drunk driving arrests, and the 11-550, for those that don't know what 11-550 is, it's under the influence of a controlled substance, so cocaine, heroin, methamphetamine would fall under that category. So of the Ojai municipal code violations that were enforced last year, primarily had to do with some type of alcohol violation were the primary citations, there were a few in the parks as well, and burning on public property, but that's, the offenses were a total of 18 for the, for our Ojai municipal code violations. So call types, so we respond to a variety of calls, and the one thing that I want to remind the public of is, no matter how small you think it is, if you think there's a crime afoot, call us. Our dispatchers do a wonderful job of prioritizing the call, and sending us to the emergency calls for service that we need to respond to, and if it's something that isn't an emergency now, they will put it on the queue as we're handling other emergency calls, but we will respond in order based on severity of the call that we're going on. So don't ever hesitate to call because you think we're too busy. You can call and our dispatchers will prioritize that information. So our deputies responded to 1,921 calls for service, of all these calls above, of property crimes, and sex offenses, and missing and found property and people, domestic violence. There was, so it was a 630 drop in calls for service. I don't have anything to attribute to the drop in calls for service, it just was 630 fewer. So, but once again, I encourage you all to call, you are our eyes and ears, we can't see and do everything, we 100% rely on the community being an active participant in crime prevention. So response times, in 2016, from the time that you called 911 for an emergency call for service, it was six, on average, six minutes and about 40 seconds or so, 6.72 minutes was the response time from the time that you, with the call was received by the dispatcher. From the time the deputy had received it, it was only four and a third minutes for the actual response, so that's broken out of the 617, so it's not on top of, that was within that time slot. The vehicle code violations that were cited, primarily were the, was registration violations, failing to provide evidence of insurance, and then maintenance of your lamps, et cetera, on vehicles, and then failure to stop at stop signs. So if I could encourage everybody to stop at stop signs, register your vehicles, that would be great. I know of the accidents we had last year, a third of them were in cases of rear-rending. People were following too closely and not paying attention, so just a reminder to please pay attention to the vehicles in front of you, give them adequate space. People slam on their brakes for a variety of reasons, whether they're distracted, something runs out in front of them, give yourselves ample time to get to where you're going, so that you're not running into one another. You just have to provide for more time. So the injury accidents, we had a total of 84 accidents this past year, 55 were non-injury and 29 were injury accidents. We had seven that were DUI-related, which is a little over double what it was in 2015. We didn't have any fatal accidents either of the two years of 2015 and 2016. Now, I know we had a fatal accident, or a woman that was struck in December, who passed away several months later. It will not show up on a fatal accident because of the time delay from when she passed to, from when the accident occurred, but we know that somebody died as a result of a car accident. So expect some additional enforcement, some additional signage. There's the three Es of traffic enforcement, and it's education, enforcement, and engineering. If it's, if we can identify that there's an engineering flaw, or something that could be done to make things safer, we'll work with the Public Works Division. And then I'm a big believer in education, so you'll see message boards, you'll probably see one out in the neighborhood soon that says, welcome home, drive safely, enforcement coming. Yes, that's a warning, enforcement is coming, so please, slow down, there's kids on the street, there's pedestrians, there's animals, take your time, please. On our city streets, if you're driving 80 miles an hour for a quarter of a mile versus 20 miles an hour, you're going to get there, what, three seconds quicker? It is not worth it. So probation and parole searches, typically, we spend a lot of time with this group, we want to make sure that they're following the conditions of the probation and parole. So our deputies are pretty active in maintaining checks on them to make sure they're not in, out of compliance with anything. So last year, we did 540 probation searches, which is 68 fewer than the year prior, but we netted an additional 18 arrests on top of that. So of the 540 probation searches that were conducted, we arrested 292 people. So clearly, they were not following the requirements of the probation and parole, and then were subsequently arrested. So it's an important tool for us to hold them accountable, to help keep our numbers low for crime, because they need to be held to that standard that we expect as a society. That is the end of that presentation.
Both for the presentation and the good news, does anyone have any questions to the chief?
I have two questions asked, the first one, the, you know, when a death occurs, you're going to do an investigation. Is there any, you know, I had asked in a past council session, that we try to set up some type of a uniform investigation, where you obviously are the first responder, you're going to do that, then we do do something in conjunction with the city engineer and the city manager's office, and we really look at the three things that you just talked about, which I hadn't heard it said so purposely, purposefully, and then bring it back to the council so that we know what's going on. You, you know, you may call or interact with Gray Grant, but we don't know what's going on, and I think the public would like to know in the event of a death, what happened, and what we could do to prevent it from occurring again. So I don't know how to do that, but I really look forward to maybe having a conversation with you to set something like that up.
I will certainly work with the city manager on coming up with a way to keep council informed of the progress that's made between myself and our office and Public Works. I do talk to Greg on a regular basis about issues within the city, we strategize what we think is going to work well, and what we have that's on the, you know, the future as far as road safety that's going to be taking place in Ojai, and to make sure that we're using the limited funds that we have here appropriately, but at the same time, understanding where are critical masses for accidents and what we can do to help prevent them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Paul did you? Thank you, Chief. I had a question on what's called Attachment G in our book. It is a calls-for-service jurisdiction hall, and I'll just come down to the part that I had a question on, it's one that shows alarms and arson and disturbances. And down towards the bottom, it says, right after collision, it says self-initiated, and in 2015, there were 251 self-initiated calls, and in 2016, zero. I'm wondering what that is.
So I looked at the same thing, and I don't know if it's just a glitch, or if it's also the change in software that we had, where it doesn't count it the same way. Much like the response times, there was a change in how our, basically, we went to a new system called VersaTerm, which was different than the old Vision Tech system that we had, and how that information is collected and sent to our dispatch center, and then regurgitated back through crime analysis to us, doesn't capture everything the same. Last year, in 2015, response times for, there was a Priority E, and then a Priority 1, 2, 3, and 4. Last year, there was only a Priority 1, 2, 3, and 4, so what they did was they combined emergency calls and Priority 1 calls together in the same group. So across the board, I think we all saw an increase in response times, because they added the number of calls that fall in that category, it was a larger number. So I suspect that that's the case, but I can certainly confirm that and let you know, I can give a follow-up update to find out why we went from, because I guarantee you that we did not go to zero of anything.
What is a self-initiated call?
So for, a self-initiated would be if I'm making a car stop.
Okay.
That would be self-initiated, or pedestrian stop, somebody waving me down, you know, saying they need assistance would be a self-initiated activity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor.
Chief, is there a similar compilation of statistics for the Ojai Valley outside of the city limits?
Yes, there is.
And is that something that, not now, but I mean, is something I could call you about, or?
Absolutely. If you're interested in what's happening in the unincorporated area, absolutely.
Thank you.
It may not, it may not break it down to this detail, because I think some of them talk about the county as a whole, and so it's difficult to break that out, but I will-
There is a breakout for the Ojai Valley.
I believe so, and I'll confirm with you as well.
Curious.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask one more question?
Chief. Did you have something to do?
No, no, you answered my question.
Okay.
Chief, on the, I know last night you went to the Democratic Club and gave a speech on sanctuary cities, and I know this doesn't have anything to do with crime, but while you're up here, can you give us five minutes on your policy here, or the county policy on sanctuary cities, and how you're going to deal with illegal alien arrests and things of that nature?
Yeah, absolutely. As you all know, I work for the sheriff, Sheriff Jeff Dean, and I said this at the meeting last night, there's one sheriff, and then there's a bunch of deputies. I happen to be a deputy, because I'm not the elected official, and I follow the policies that are guided by our sheriff. And so our sheriff, along with all the chiefs of police of all the non-contract cities, have unilaterally indicated that we will not have anything to do with immigration enforcement. That is a federal responsibility, and it is not local law enforcement, and the reason is really simple. We need our community to trust us, and we need them to know that they can call us without fear of retribution. If there's a segment of our society that believes that if they call us, that there is going to be some deportation effort, they're not going to call us. Well, that just creates a bunch of victims for us. We're not willing to have that. So what we want is to have a great relationship, which we've had over years with our community, and unfortunately, last year during the national debate, it created a lot of tension for the communities, wondering what the relationship was going to be between the federal government and local law enforcement. We have not ever, and nor do I plan on, enforcing immigration, because we need to have the trust of our community in us, that we're going to protect them, no matter their immigration status. We don't ask their immigration status when we contact them, if they're the victim of a crime, we do not ask them their immigration status. If they're booked into our jail, we ask them what country they were born in. That information is provided to ICE, for ICE to choose to do what they're going to do with it. And then if ICE decides they want to interview somebody who's in our custody, we let the person who's incarcerated know that they do not have to talk to the ICE agent, that it's their right to not have that conversation with them, and if they choose not to, we just have, we sign a form saying this person refused to talk to the ICE agent, and we give that back to the ICE officer, and that's it. If the ICE agent wants to do anything with that person outside of that, after we release them for their time that they've served for our local charges, then that's between ICE and then that person, and we don't have anything to do with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And to parlay on that, the other thing that we talked about last night also was the Senate Bill, or 54, and the sheriff had put out an op-ed piece a couple of days back, just opposing the Senate bill, largely because the biggest concern is, the Senate bill would eliminate ICE's ability to even come into the custody environment at all, and by doing that, if we eliminate that access, ICE would have no choice but to then try and seek out these individuals in our community, which I think would create a higher level of angst. I don't have, and which came up in last night's meeting, I don't have any proof that that would occur, but if I was in charge of doing something, I was told I couldn't do it that way, I would find another way to do it.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And along that same line, the sheriff's office provides the bailiff services at the courthouse?
That's correct.
Right, and so the policies over there are all the same regarding, I know in some communities, they've used the courthouse when people have come down to exercise their freedoms at the courthouse, and using that as a place to pick people up.
No, correct, and so the courthouse, which is staffed by deputies, is a contract with the state. Once again, it's not a federal entity down there at our courthouse, it's a state-run operation, as far as the courthouse, but they contract with our services, and being that they're all deputy sheriffs, they will follow the guidelines of the sheriff.
Right. And last question for you, Sheriff Dean, and I haven't talked recently, but there was a time when the sheriff's office used the standard on crime statistics as west of Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Do they use that anymore?
Not that I've heard of.
Well, the reason for that is, is when I was with the county, we used that, because that's where the Amish live, and when we were the safest town, or the safest county, and I think we probably still are, west of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, that gives you a really good standard.
No, absolutely, I know, yeah, no worries, and I know that we looked at, you know, safest city numbers, and you know, there's, when you look at numbers, you know, there's always a cautionary thing that the FBI puts out, just saying, you know, these numbers, not everybody collects data the same way, so there's a lot of difficulty in looking at those numbers, but my last city that I was assigned at in Thousand Oaks, you know, routinely, not only, because it was a population of over 100,000, it was always in the top five of being the safest city in the country. So I think as a county, yeah, we're doing pretty well.
Doing okay.
But once again, we have a great relationship with our community here, all of our agencies do, and I think that's the biggest part in keeping a community safe, is having a positive relationship with your community.
Well, we're glad to have you here in the Ojai Valley.
I'm thrilled to be back.
On your new assignment, and thank the sheriff for us.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
It's been a great year.
Thank you.
Okay, a little hand for the chief. Before we get into public comment, I would like to introduce a colleague from the north, Kathy Thicke. Kathy, would you raise your hand or wave? Kathy is from Torfino, is that, and is a councilperson up there in Canada, and is here as a visitor, and has been tracking, I don't know if she's tracking my performance or just us in general, but this hasn't been her first meeting, but I didn't realize that she was an elected official from the north, so welcome, glad to have you here. Okay, we are, but-
Is she a tourist?
She's friends with the governor.
The joker here wanted to know if you were a tourist, I don't know that he has some concern about that, but-
We're keeping tabs.
You're a guest, and we welcome all guests, okay? Okay, I got a, I have several cards here. We changed the cards, and we asked people, we put on in favor and opposed, and that was not to track your politics, but to give me the opportunity to balance the comments when we get into special items, because having been part of the general community who organizes sometimes to make a point, we used to tell them, get there early, and let's get all our people up first, and then we'll see who wants to challenge whatever opinion we have. Well, I think it's a better idea to have a pro and con on every subject, as long as there is more than- there is more than one opinion. So I'm going to try to balance that. But in the case of public comments, there is no pro and con, it's just whatever the folks would like to see. And I have a Pete LaFollette, is that proper pronunciation?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council, Pete LaFollette, 999 East Ojai. And also, thank you for everybody in this community that makes it a very unique destination in which to visit. Now, the recent topic of discussion on tourism, there is an old Buddhist saying, "They come and they go." They come and they go. They come here because of the natural beauty of the valley, and they go because we only have a limited amount of valley to sustain a small population. Now, when you, as a city councilor, culture, state to the media that tourism is changing Ojai Valley, you project a foregone conclusion. I believe the draw of the tourists and visitors is because the magic and the uniqueness of the valley, and it's important that it remains intact for all who choose to, to come and go as visitors. Otherwise, we have unsustainability and everything that goes along with that and with a community that is snowballing out of control, using up all its water, using up all its apparent clean air, and not being able to see the mountains anymore, all the, all the problem and conflicts, which just comes from too many people in a limited space. So in keeping with the magic and the spirit of Ojai, may we repeat that mantra when needed, "They come and they go." They come and they go.
Yeah, thank you. Colin Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name is Colin Jones. I live at 1809 Ledera Road. Together with my wife Cindy, we own a permaculture farm called East End Eden. We've lived in Ojai for 18 years. Our son Connor Jones was raised in the East End from seven years of age and teaches permaculture at that farm. I'm here tonight to talk about people like Vicki Carton-Burne, member of Ojai First. We, along with many others, some of whom are afraid to come forward tonight because their living is threatened, were reported to the county. We were reported for our yurt, which is our teaching space, and for teaching young people the principles and ethics of permaculture without a conditional use permit. It seems to me that ethics is a word lost on people who turn in their neighbors. And I'm not even a neighbor. We live somewhat remotely in the East End, miles away from Vicki Carton-Burne. And let me be clear, people like this will say it's about short-term rentals, and it's not. We don't have a short-term rental, and we have never advertised on any rental website. What we are is someone who does not fit in to their vision of Ojai and what Ojai would become if they had their way. I heard the other day that Vicki has an aircraft and that she took it upon herself to map all the short-term rentals in Ojai.
Colin, I'll ask you to not make it personal, but to-
It was in the newspaper, you know, so.
Right, okay.
And that, that, that map was made available to the city council. The city council accepted it and used it as one of their tools to find the citizens who had short-term rentals. And I feel emboldened by that, she moved on to the county, whose code enforcement is complaint-driven, overwhelming them with complaints on her fellow citizens, and again, using the government to enforce an agenda. Is this Ojai? Or did I wake up somewhere else a month ago? I think it's time we all wake up and put a stop to this. I love this town. I've never seen it so divided, divided on short-term rentals, divided on tourism. Sniping and reporting each other will not solve any of the problems. It will only serve to exacerbate them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Colin. Peggy LaSara.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston, members of the council, staff, chief. My name is Peggy LaSara, and I live in Ojai. As some of you know, Ojai held its first-ever March for Science on Saturday, April 22nd, and I'd like to thank the individuals and groups that helped to make that happen. Thumbs up to the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, Ojai Indivisible, the Ojai Chapter of the National Organization of Women, and to Patagonia that generously donated recyclable material for our poster-making event. Thumbs up to the City of Ojai Public Works Department and the Ventura County Sheriff's Department for their support. It was terrific. Thumbs up to Patricia Cardinelli-Avis and her colleagues for opening the event with beautiful music. And thumbs up to the scientists and naturalists who spoke at the event. Two thumbs up to the marchers. Somewhere between 200 and 250 of them got up early on a Saturday morning to stand for science and the refutation of bias in our culture. It was deeply reassuring to see how many people in our midst value expert, evidence-based decision-making practices and the refutation of bias. On the topic of bias, thumbs up to those journalists who maintain high standards of journalistic integrity and refrain from using their medium for veiled and not-so-veiled attempts to manipulate public opinion regarding politically charged topics and/or to silence council members and citizens who disagree with them or threaten their agenda. Thumbs down to me for neglecting to recall that the owner of the Ojai Valley News mentioned to me last month that he, in an interesting parallel to one of our city council members, had also contacted Caltrans and obtained information that allegedly supported the contention that there has been a decrease in traffic in Ojai over recent years. My memory was jogged by a recent thumbs up, thumbs down column in the OVN. Thumbs up to the democratic tradition in these chambers of allowing uncensored public comments at the beginning of city council meetings. I'm deeply personally appreciative.
Thank you. Petrie Williams. Did I pronounce that right?
You got it right.
Okay.
Hello, thank you. Petrie Alexander-Williams, 807 Grand. I am the founding president of Safety Harbor Kids. We, I'm really proud to say we are celebrating our 10th anniversary of serving local orphans, foster, and homeless children. We provide career, college, music, and art programs to these kids. Without our help, 80% of these children will end up homeless, 60% will end up in prison, and our girls will be propositioned for prostitution within 48 hours of hitting our streets. They are stalked by predators while they're in high school, knowing that these kids are going to be turned out. What we do is we give them hope, we give them dreams, we give them jobs, and we give them opportunity to go to college. And we do it by sending teachers one-on-one to the programs, to the homes. And it really makes a difference. And I'd like to thank, you know, we have amazing people in this community who have come on board and helped us. We've been quietly serving the kids for 10 years. I figured it's time to let everybody know we're having our coming-out party. You'll see the ads around town. Topa Mountain Winery, Larry has been one of our sponsors. And we are going to be having on May 19th, it's going to be a party. Come on, have fun, let's do a unity, let's everybody come together. It's going to be a Little Feet Concert and a poker tournament, so if you want to come play some cards and raise some funds, all of the money goes to the kids' programs. I'm one of the lowest-paid directors in the nation, and I can tell you that this is all about helping the kids. Our founder was a parentless child himself who grew up in Malibu. And I'll tell you, when you see the faces on these kids, when they know that they can get a job, or that they can get to learn to play an instrument, or have a hope to go to college or have a job, it just changes them and it gives them a purpose. So together, we're doing this. It's safetyharborkids.org. We have early bird tickets available, VIP spaces available right now. It is going to be fun, 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 all for a great cause. And I just really quickly want to thank our sponsors, Ojai Valley Inn, Aces in Eight, Ojai Business Center, Bamboo Creek, AJ Cuisine, Laurie's Lemonade, Frameworks of Ojai, Rainbow Bridge, Larry Wilde of Coldwell Banker, Primavera Gallery. And that's just the ones who've just come on board to help us for this event. So it's the community together coming to help our children in our backyard. Malcolm McDowell is one of our spokespersons. And if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call me. If you want to help, you want to donate, you want to participate, and you just want to come play, come on down and join us, May 19th, Friday, at the Topa Mountain Winery from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And that's safetyharborkids.org. And thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Petrie.
Thank you.
That would be, what, 102 or 103?
There you go. I feel you. The environment doesn't pay very well either. All right. Get out my trusty paper. All right. Thank you. Okay, now, announcing on behalf of the main organizer, my mom, Ruth Reynolds, the Ojai Valley community is invited to join a local zero-carbon climate march this Saturday, April 29th. We're meeting 10:00 AM at the Oakview Park and Resource Center, that's at 555 Mahoney Avenue in Oakview. Our route is going to be going up Mahoney Avenue, taking a right south on Highway 33. We've cleared it. Going up to Ranch Market, then looping back to Mahoney Avenue. And those who have the energy will do it another time, one more time, because it's so short and should be ending up about noon time. So we're trying to be carbon neutral. That's why it's in Oakview, because that's where we live, and we're going to walk there. And we're asking people to walk or ride your bike. If you can't do that, then be with us in spirit. And this march is in solidarity with the Washington DC Climate Jobs and Justice March. It's also happening on, on Saturday. And this is just to kind of, kind of push back on not losing our hard-won protections of climate health and our communities and the rights of people of color and workers and indigenous people, immigrants, women, young people, et cetera. So that's the statement that's happening there. And now with my other hat on, representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition Dark Skies Work Group, I have continued on as a volunteer to chair that work group. And a reminder to the community, it's International Dark Sky Week this week, April 22nd to the 28th. Darksky.org is a wealth of information and resources on light pollution and dark sky issues. And this, this week was started by a high school student, Jennifer Barlow, in 2003. So things, some reminders for you, light only what you need, use energy-efficient bulbs and only as bright as you need, shield lights and direct them down, only use lights when you need it, and choose warm white light bulbs. And again, darkskies.org is a great resource, and we want to remind people that we're not about dark skies, like literally, but about appropriate lighting and reducing light pollution in our community, because it does have an effect on human health, wildlife health. It actually, glaring lights reduce safety and security, the research is in on that, and a wealth of other things. So it's an important issue, and we as a, as a community have the, the means to make a difference on light pollution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. M. Thomas. Oh, Michelle, you are in disguise with M.
I don't write very well anymore, so I try to shorten up. So hello, good evening. City Council, I came to thank you again for your patience and leadership. And I want my fellow citizens to know that I am personally offended by my council, our council, our volunteers, being personally, publicly berated. It is okay to be mad, it's okay to state facts, it is not okay, in my book, to be calling people out by name. I wish this would stop. It's not the Ojai I move to. In fact, some mornings I wake up and think, did I move to Westlake or someplace because of this code enforcement stuff? Moving on, the law of unintended consequences, like the reporting of code violations of yurts. So now, we're minus two affordable housing units and a non-tourist-related business. But again, I thank you all for listening to this stuff, because really, it's not your jurisdiction. This stuff should all be going to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors directly, right? But sphere of influence, city council, I get that. I'm very happy to notice further on your agenda that you're addressing my list, number one issue facing Ojai, which is securing a stable water supply. If we don't have a stable water supply, nothing else matters. Let's see, back to affordable housing, and I'm done. We used to have more affordable housing in Ojai. They were rather substandard, and they, but they were at Montgomery. I'm sure you'll remember, I don't want to say the S-word because I, you know, but they were pretty substandard. But historically, that was affordable housing. They were redeveloped into what? Million-dollar condos. So I'm going to close with a plea. If we do end up doing something with chaperal, which I do feel is a public property, but if the back parcel is somehow developed, please, no more million-dollar condos if we really need affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Severo, are you still here? Or? Okay, I guess he put his card in and we changed the sequence, that's fine. Christine Golden.
All right, good evening, Mayor Johnston, council, members of staff. I'm Christine Golden, and I'm chair of the Public Arts Committee for the Arts Commission. And as most of you know, there's been a bit of a debate in respect to a motion made two weeks ago directing a joint meeting between the Arts Commission and the HPC to review the museum gates. And this debate seems to center on whether or not the motion, as made by Mr. Wirick, precludes the Arts Commission from appointing its public art arm, the Public Art Committee, to take this matter up. So I thought it might be helpful, because some of you might be asking, well, why can't the Arts Commission do that? What's the big deal? What is all this stuff about? A committee to approve public art? So I want you first to know that the Arts Commission itself has never vetted a public art project. Every single public art project in this city has been vetted either by the Committee to Approve Public Art or by a public jury, because that's what the ordinance designates happens with public art projects. Now, the Arts Commission has the role of approving the recommendation of either the public art jury or the Committee to Approve Public Art, and that's all spelled out in the public art ordinance. So in the case of the museum art gates, the designated committee to do this work would be the Committee to Approve Public Art. And I also want you to know the vetting that I wanted to give to you two weeks ago as to why. Why is this so? And that's because the Kappa, Committee to Approve Public Art, includes a public art expert. In their wisdom, they knew that there might not always be a public art expert on the Arts Commission. And at this time, there is no public art expert on the Arts Commission. Also, there is a planning commissioner on the Kappa, which means that this gate matter doesn't have to additionally go before the planning commission. So it was all very well thought out by the authors of the ordinance. And then there are all the other tasks that the Committee to Approve Public Art does, making sure there's a contract and reviewing it, looking at the maintenance plan, assigning an accession number, arranging for archival photography, keeping a record of all the correspondence, the minutes of the meeting, the change orders, keeping the archival drawings, any maquettes, any material samples, conducting a final inspection, handling plaque installation, updating and maintaining the archival records for the city. The Arts Commission does not do these tasks. The Committee to Approve Public Art does these tasks. So it's my hope in this little briefing that you'll reconsider and direct staff to allow this to go forward and to have the Arts Commission do what it has done. Every other time a public art project has come to the Arts Commission, it has directed the Committee to Approve Public Art to handle it. So I hope the motion can get straightened out and that you can move forward in the correct way, because, well, as Studs Terkel says, "Hope dies last." Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Just want to comment real quick. During council member report, I plan on bringing up the issue.
Okay. And we define what a public arts project is under the code?
I'm not going to talk about it.
Okay, okay, good. Jeff, Jeff Crowell?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. Chair. As many of you know, I'm part of Shangri-La Care Cooperative and also Botanical Care Laboratory. One of the things I had asked Mr. McClary tonight is, of course, I'd like to know what some of the status of what some of these applications for the cannabis that are in process. Some of my founding members, as you know, are retirees here, and unfortunately, I have to report that one of our attorneys had a massive stroke over the weekend, and he calls me up every three days wanting to know what is up. So, as soon as he comes out of St. Thomas, I hope to inform him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, Dawn Titing. I am putting on my museum hat for brief update on the happenings at the museum. Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone who came out and attended the opening reception. We just had a new installation. It features over, well, 66 works of art by the local artists. It's our 15th annual exhibition of the Ojai Studio Artists. So, the opening reception was on Saturday, but we would like to invite everyone to come to our weekly town talks, or excuse me, Artist Talks on Saturday morning. They start this Saturday, April 29th. Our first three artists that are featured are Pamela Grau, Gail Childress, and Stephen Edwards. They will be talking about their pieces in the show, as well as their mediums and how they work. That starts at 11 o'clock. And attendance at the talk is free for museum members and included with museum admission. Going back to this year's show, the theme for this year's show is continuing our centennial celebration, and it is called Idealism Visualized. It's based on a theme by Edward Drummond Libby. Also, on Saturdays, we continue our historic walking tours, launching from the museum every Saturday, except when it's warm in August and September, are our historical walking tours. Train dosens take you around downtown. It's a great opportunity to know more about Ojai, the history of Ojai, as well as a number of historic buildings in town. Rolling back the schedule just a little bit to this coming Thursday, two days from today, August 27th, we are hosting the Chamber of Commerce mixer, and that is from 5:30 to 7:00. One of the treats of this event, they are holding a raffle. The Ojai Studio Artists have put together a gift basket that contains $2,000 worth of local art. So, it's a unique opportunity to own a piece of Ojai art and history. So, we invite everyone to come out for that. And looking down the road on May 20th, we have a Family Fun Day plan that's going to be free for families coming up that will feature art activities and history hijinks. And I will just say, stay tuned for some more exciting news coming up from the museum in the next few weeks. We'll be making a big announcement that's exciting for the whole community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Greg Mackey. Seventeen years ago, my family and I moved to the Ojai Valley, and we built a permitted structure in our, on our property. We live in the East End, and we got caught up in the dragnet that came through with the code enforcement complaint. There's a lot of people that got caught up in that, and I'm too one of those people. So, one thing that's very striking about this complaint is that it was filed by someone who knew nothing about me, who doesn't know me, I don't know them, and yet, I had this complaint in my mailbox from this person. And we were, my wife and I were bewildered. Who on earth would be doing this to us? All of our neighbors are cool. We're in good standing with all of them. We have no enemies, and we were just totally bewildered until a month later, after we received this, we found out who it was. So, what this person does not know about us is that we use our guest house for many purposes. Some people stay for years. Some people stay for months. Some people stay for weeks. And in the odd case, some people stay for days, as in an Airbnb, and we have it listed as that. But we use this guest house for many reasons, and so that's why I don't call it an STR. I call it an MTR. It's more like a, not a short-term rental, but a middle-term rental. So, that's, it's very troubling to me that someone who lives miles and miles and miles away from me would lodge a complaint anonymously for something that they thought was troubling to them. I have this thing, like doctors take the oath, first, do no harm. And I've been very harmed by this, and it's, it really hurts me. So, I give priority lodging and pricing for my guest house to people who come in for the music festival, the musicians. I give priority lodging to storytellers. I give priority lodging to writers who want to do a retreat for weeks or months, whatever it takes. These are all at reduced rates, and these all really, I feel, benefit the community of Ojai. I personally have been very negatively affected by this whole thing, and I just want you to know that, you know, this hurt me very badly and my family. And thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next topic is our consent agenda. I understand that we're pulling one item off the consent. Is that right, City Manager?
Yes, we're requesting, recommending that you pull off Item G, which is the ordinance amending the municipal code for the allowed uses and permit requirements of commercial manufacturing zoning districts. This is to do with the Bryant Circle Code Amendment to bring that into consistency with the general plan. So, recommendation would be to pull that. We need to get the correct language on the agenda. We'd like to put that back on for May 9th.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. I would like to make a correction for Item C. Do I pull it off? I have to make a correction.
Yeah. Well, okay. Item C. Okay. So, we'll take Item C. Pull. Okay. Are there any others? Okay.
A motion to approve.
Okay.
That'd be A, B, D, E, and F.
Yes.
Second? Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Item C and Item G pulled. Is there any objection? Not? Well...
We want to take care of C.
Take what?
You want to take care of C right now, just to type it?
Yeah. Okay. Susan, you want to talk about?
The correction is just on page 115, that it says, "The following members of the public spoke in opposition to the OTID renewal, and Leslie Kark did not speak in opposition." And then on the next page, and that's, maybe there's other mistakes, but that's the one I caught. And then Peggy LaSara, the next paragraph was, did not speak in favor of it. So, you have to reverse those two. Yeah?
We'll make those corrections.
Okay.
Could I also clarify? I don't know that we actually got the vote for the consent calendar items, Mr. Mayor? The ones that were...
Well, there was without objection.
Okay.
So, it'd be unanimous.
Thank you.
Unless we need a roll call for it.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, I had a couple of corrections, and I don't think I want to take up the time this evening. And it is mostly in what they would, I think, in the courts, they call it dictum, not the salient points. So, I'm not going to make those corrections, but I'm going to work with the City Manager and the clerk on some of those things. It's very difficult to transcribe and have the kind of extensive content that we are having, as long as the motion itself is accurate. So, with those corrections, should we approve number C, or pardon me, letter C?
No. I move approval as amended.
Okay.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any comment? Okay. Any objection? Not so ordered. Okay. Item G was pulled, and that's going to be brought back at a later time. Is that right? So, do we need a motion to table that, or just pull it and forget it, or until it comes back?
No motions needed. It'll just be continued by staff to the next, the next meeting.
Okay. Done. Thank you. Consent agenda is complete, which brings us to the public hearings. And the public hearing on the introduction of the ordinance, is that the one we just pulled, or is that a different ordinance?
Different ordinance.
Different ordinance. Okay. Shall I open the hearing and take staff reports? Is that...
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing is open.
This is for an introduction of an ordinance related to landscaping water efficiency standards in compliance with the state Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, also known as MELLO. The recommendations are to conduct a public hearing and to introduce City Council ordinance, making the findings and approving a text amendment, TA 16-01, amending Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 12, Landscaping Standards Incorporating the State's Model Water Efficient Landscape Ordinance, MELLO, and approving the environmental determination. The state adopted a new water-efficient ordinance. Cities were required to become compliant with that by adopting it as is or adopting a more restrictive local ordinance by December 1st, 2015. The city adopted the MELLO by order of law and then directed staff to follow up with former adoption of an ordinance. This is the follow-up on that. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on the text amendment back in October and adopted a resolution recommending that the City Council approve the text amendment. The current state ordinance has been revised to incorporate the new MELLO requirements with no additional water-efficient landscape restrictions beyond what the state basic well-o required, but maintaining other non-water-efficient landscape ordinance requirements in this article, so it's not changing the other portions. So, again, the state adopted this new standard. The city approved it by order of law, but we need to fix the code to be consistent with that. Again, the recommendation from staff in the Plan Commission is not to go beyond the minimum standards as required by the state, however, that is an option that the City Council could consider at this time. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
One quick question, just to be absolutely clear. What's proposed here in text amendment 16-01 includes nothing in addition to what's already in place by either state law or municipal code.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there, are there any other questions of staff before we... Okay. I don't have any cards, but is there anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? Okay. Seeing none. Susan?
Well, you know, Renee Roth wanted to speak to this issue, and unfortunately, she is not well. I mean, she's sick, so she can't make it. So, at some point, I wanted to read some of the comments that she was going to say. It doesn't have to be now, but it could...
Okay. Well, I think probably now, wouldn't that, as though she were here. And we'll close the hearing deliberation afterwards. So, go ahead.
All right. Okay. Renee Roth points out that what we're trying to achieve here is landscaping that not, is not only water-wise, but that is, includes soil that's permeable. And so, I'm going to, meaning that we have gardening and landscaping practices where water is absorbed and saved. Okay? And for the last decade, several decades, we've been doing the opposite. We've been paving, and we've been blowing everything off the soil, et cetera. And anyway, I'll just read a few random quotes in hopes it comes out good. Okay? So, Renee Roth is one of our local, I consider her a water-wise expert, along with Connor Jones and many, many, our community is filled with people who understand permaculture practices, who understand the connection between soil health and water practices. So, there's a quote here from a Dr. Famaglietti, I don't know how to pronounce his name. He began, he, there's, this is a, she, I think she took a course from him. And here's the quote, and this is a very, very important concept, I think, for us all to understand. There's a difference between drought and chronic water scarcity. He says, drought, it's drought.
Drought, yeah.
Out with the drought. I'm Dutch. I can't, I always get a mix up. Out with the drought. Drought comes and goes, and this one could be on the way out. It's hard to know just yet. But chronic water scarcity is a persistent state, and that's what we face here in California. So, for the last several months, we've had Angelo, who I think is still here, I don't know if he is, you know, and, you know, discussing, you know, the water levels and all of that, which is important, but even if we had an abundance of rain, we still need, you know, these wise water practices. Ah, let's see. I might almost be done. I'd like, there's one more. I want to read this. I just have one more minute. "A new water paradigm is necessary to address heat waves, drought, floods, and severe storms that are increasingly wreaking havoc in the United States. Another water expert named Michael Kravitz argues that the old water paradigm of conventional rainwater management calls for wastefully draining precipitation from rural and urban lands directly to streams, thus disrupting nature's small, local water cycles. The urgent task," and that's what we should be trying to accomplish with our ordinances, "is now to retain as much rainwater as possible in cities, agricultural lands, forests, and deserts. Indeed, all of the world's landscape ecosystems..." So that life-giving moisture can permeate soil, replenish groundwater, and rise into the atmosphere to regulate temperature and rainfall instead of ultimately draining into the oceans and contributing to sea level rise. Plants influence the climate greatly by regulating the water cycle and the huge solar energy flows linked to it. Human disregard of the need to return precipitation to ecosystems is a major factor in the escalation of climate change. Dry soils and paved surfaces increase local temperatures and reduce precipitation over a larger affected area, as well as preventing natural sequestration of carbon in the soil. Removing vegetation from an ecosystem dries out the soil, and removing water from an ecosystem reduces vegetation. Taken together, these processes are hastening desertification of the planet and intensifying global warming." So, I'll stop there, because there's much more. But what we're, what we want to do with these new standards is accomplish, you know, a valley-wide ecosystem that's truly sustainable. And we have a long way to go. Every, we see more and more how everything's connected. I'm in favor of no more paving, just only permeable paving. And people need to understand that the answer is not to have a dead, a giant dead garden, you know, made, filled with, you know, rocks and pebbles and just dead. You know, that's not a way to save, ultimately to save water. And I better just stop, because it's my favorite subject. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. I'm sorry, Renee is not feeling well, and she did stay late two weeks ago.
She waited four hours. Yeah.
Right. So, and I want to compliment the Council on staying with the agenda order this time. That's helpful to everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there are, I don't have any cards, then I guess I'll close the hearing, and the Council now...
I'll move introduction of the City Council ordinance numbered to be determined, making the findings and approving text amendment TA 60-01, amending Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 12, et cetera.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to add a couple of comments.
Okay.
Speaking specifically to what Renee was talking about, this new MELLO law doesn't do anything for it. That's the problem I have with it, is as a landscape contractor... in fact, I was the first one in the city to have to deal with this ordinance. So it was a three-ring circus, trumping through all the hoops to actually complete it, through lack of understanding from my part, lack of understanding through the city staff's part, lack of understanding from the owner's part. So this law is, just makes it more difficult to do something wise in this community. The problem I have with it is, on a large scale, it's not an issue. It's easy to do. It's on the small scale that what we're going to do is we're going to place this burden on small landscape projects in this community. And what we'll end up doing is, people will not abide by this law. What they'll do is continue what they have been doing, which again, is a detriment to our soil, a detriment to our ecology. It's just a detriment to the culture of our community. And it's because of laws like this, and that's the only problem I have with this. On a large scale, on a, you know, a medium-sized scale, I have no problem with it. But when it comes down to the regular homeowner in this community on an 80-by-80 parcel, this, these regulations are going to make it difficult for anyone to comply. And I just, I don't see it being a win for anyone. And the problem is, we could have amended this text, but the only way we could have amended it is by making it more strict. Again, it doesn't make sense. We're putting this incredible burden on the average consumer, and so, you know, I don't have the right word for the people up in the state that I can use publicly, but, you know, it's just, it's just poorly written, and it's just not a good piece of legislature, so.
Could you be more specific what kind of burden it places on people?
Well, for instance, you have to, you'll have to hire a landscape architect, you'll have to hire a designer, you'll have to hire an engineer, you'll have to do soils reports. You're going to have to do a multitude of things at a small level that are going to increase the scope of costs on doing, on doing any project. And that's the burden. You know, architects are getting from $135 to $235 to $350 an hour, and irrigation designers getting $175 an hour. You know, the, what we're doing is, we're not allowing the average homeowner to actually do this. That's the problem with it, is now the average homeowner's going to have to go hire all of these consultants, or hire all of these people. So if you're an architect, it's a win for you. If you're, if you're an irrigation engineer, it's a win for you. If you're a landscape contractor, it's a win for me. But it's not a win for the consumer. It's not a win for the homeowner. So, and I don't think we have a choice. We have to pass this. Or again, create one that's even more stringent, yeah.
You're not suggesting we do that, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay, good, all right. Other comments? Okay, then, what?
Well, I would hope that we could simplify things. There must be some way, yeah.
If I could jump in on that question. Unfortunately, Sacramento has tied the city's hands. The choices before the council are adopt this ordinance as-is, or modify it to be more stringent, or do nothing and the ordinance is adopted for you. And in fact, that, how already has been adopted for you. Sacramento very much tied the city's hands in ways that I understand the goals or the wisdom of Sacramento, but it is not a paragon of clarity, not one of their, that's reality.
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wierig?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, we are now on discussion item number three, second dwelling units. I have one card.
I did, you know, I wanted to refute something somebody else was saying.
Okay, well, with only one card, Peggy, then good. I'll just put this back.
Rest for a while. I'll go get a cookie.
Okay, okay. Who would like to commence the discussion? This is...
We want a staff report?
No, yes, pardon me.
Sure, we'll give a brief support.
I have some questions after the staff report.
Two recommendations here. One, we're recommending that the council adopt a resolution to extend the deadline for the applications for the second dwelling unit compliance program, recommending that the council extend it by one year, from March 8, 2017 to March 8, 2018. Also, and the other issue here, which is probably a little more of a lengthy and challenging issue, is to consider the impact of new state laws governing accessory dwelling units on the city's present policy requiring will-serv letters from utilities to demonstrate available capacity and a willingness to serve all new and legalized residential units, including accessory dwelling units. And we are seeking for some direction from staff on that. I think it's fairly cut and dry on the compliance program. The council can certainly extend that. They can extend that by a year, or a shorter, or a greater amount of time. In the staff report, it indicated that you could go, that you could extend it by a year, or by a lesser or shorter period of time. Just to clarify, you could do a year, you could do less than a year, you could do more than a year if the council wanted to. Verify that, Mr. Summers, there's no limit.
Yes, that's correct. That was a straight typo, lesser or greater.
So that's a simple policy choice tonight, if they want to extend that program. And then the other issue has to do with the requirement for will-serv letters. Presently, the city does require a will-serv letter to confirm that there is adequate capacity for utility connections. The city is not required by state law to require will-serv letters. That is the current practice and a pretty much common accepted practice among building officials. However, it's certainly an option among the, for the council here to consider other policy choices. The city could require proof of working utilities in lieu of requiring a will-serv letter, so that is clearly a policy choice for the council. A big issue here has to do with the current fee that's being imposed on accessory dwelling units by the Ojai Valley Sanitation District. I know that is a big part of the factor here in terms of the concern with the policy question on the will-serv letters. Mr. Summers, do you have anything that you would like to add at this point?
Couple of quick points, of help of any questions, of course, but the key there is that nothing in state law requires or prohibits the city from requiring will-serv letters for second units. And just to make it, the point quite clear, on discussion tonight is only the issue of will-serv letters and second units, not will-serv letters and new homes. Will-serv letters are required by the city's code for new homes. The city has, the council has the power to change that requirement as well. That would be, have to be agendized as a whole separate discussion, and would require changing the code. The present requirement for will-serv letters for second units is imposed by the building official pursuant, as is frankly standard for every other building official, under the power of the building code. It's worth pointing out there that the building code requires that every residential unit have working utilities, natural gas, electric, sewer, and water. The will-serv letter is the tool used to verify compliance with that. The council has the power to change the city's policy, or rather, direct staff to change the city's practice and change the policy, to instead require something else. The recommendation there is that a working utility service boils down to two things. A physical connection, which is, would be established by inspection, verifying the pipes are in the right place, and the ability of the entity to serve, that's passed, been verified by the will-serv letter. You could alternatively require it by proof of a connection to an existing utility, coupled with a present utility builder would show they currently have working utilities. The council's power is to change the will-serv letter requirement for second units. The council has no power to change how the sanitation district will respond. The expectation is that if the council changes the will-serv requirement, sanitation district will do what Mr. Palmer declared they would do with the planning commission when this was discussed, and continue to impose their $17,000 per unit fee. The tools to challenge that are political and potentially legal if the council wished to consider the matter in closed session, or political to rewrite their, have Sacramento close the loophole on the bill, or else convince your compatriots on their board to change their own policy. The, the staff report goes in detail on the particular law, but the new second unit law, Government Code, Section 65852.2, is clear that the city cannot require a new utility connection for certain types of second units that are fully within an existing residence. The city has the power to, but may choose not to, require a utility connection for other second units, that is new ones that are new, new built up from the ground, or new ones that are outside of the existing boundaries of a house, an addition, so to speak. And the law is clear that the city cannot impose a utility capacity or connection charge. Unfortunately, the law is poorly worded. There's an ambiguity as to whether that also applies to things that aren't the city's special districts. The special districts articulate a reading of the rule that they have the power to continue to impose their fee. Housing advocates and cities have taken a different position. There is no case resolving the issue yet. I'm not aware of any challenges that have been filed in trial courts yet either. One may be in the works, and I haven't done exhaustive search of every city in the state, but I'm not aware of any resolution yet. There are rumors through the league that there are bills being put forward or considered in the back end to fix this from Sacramento's perspective, resolving it one way or the other. No bills, to my knowledge, have been introduced publicly yet to accomplish that. And otherwise, I'm available for questions.
Mayor Johnston have a question?
I want to point out that in the discussion of the staff report on page three of five, it references Government Code, Section 658, 65852.2, and of course, quotes accurately the law, and I just want to read it here for the record, that for, we're talking about accessory dwelling units, not second units, in terms of, they've sort of renamed...
Sacramento has changed the name. I use the old word.
Specifically call this an accessory dwelling unit, that they are not to be treated as a new residential use. For the purpose of, and just to read it, a local agency shall not require the applicant to install a new or separate utility connection directly behind, between the accessory building unit and parenthetically, the primary unit, and the utility, or impose a related connection fee or capacity charge. So it's, I think it's quite clear what the intent of the law is in terms of the permitting activity of the city. Second of all, one thing that I didn't see in the staff report that I think ought to be mentioned is that 65852.2 does reference another part of the code, which I think clarifies the intent of the law. And that is that while that only taught, it doesn't refer to special districts, it just refers to city and county, or city-county agencies in terms of the prohibition against imposing the connection fee or capacity charge or requiring it. It references 6600, and it says in Part F, fees charged for the construction of accessory dwelling units shall be determined in accordance with Chapter 5, commencing with Section 66000. And what does 66000 says? It says, with respect to local agency, you pointed this out earlier in a briefing note, local agency means a county, city, whether a general law or chartered, city and county, school district, special district, authority, agency, or any other municipal, public corporation or district, or other political subdivisions of the state. To me, it's very clear what the intent was, although I agree with you, it wasn't worded well. And so I think what our, I just want to point that out, because as we get into our discussion of it, I think our responsibility is to serve the goals of our general plan. And what I think the clear intent of this law is, and to say basically, look, we're not going to require it as a condition of permitting in terms of the will-serv from the capacity, generating a capacity fee from the sanitary district. I think the intent of this law is extremely clear. So I just want to make that comment. That that's embedded in the state statute, the calling out of special districts as being subject to this law, in my opinion.
Okay, Paul, you have anything you want to?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to concur with Mayor Protem. In me reading the law, even if there wasn't that $66,000 code, where it talks about a special district, it clearly states that we don't need to require it.
We should not.
And whether or not it shakes out that there's still going to be a connection fee or not, we shouldn't get involved in that, and that should be between whomever's going to be doing the development and the sanitation district, and we ought to just stay back and not do it, not require anything. I think that's clear, and that's a very clear intent. I also agree with you that it doesn't look like the sanitation district should be applying any fees on them, on them either, but that's not our fight, as far as I'm concerned.
I concur with what Mayor Protem Wierig said, and Councilmember Paul Blatz.
Okay, should we take the first recommendation first, which is the second dwelling unit? My question is, is what is the necessity to extend that now that the state, in effect, has legitimized second units on properties? Bill?
Answering that question, that is, the extension with respect to the non-conforming program, which has expired, and this was a significant, the issue, paying the capacity fee for getting a permit, you know, and serving our general plan, goals, our housing element plan of getting Rena numbers up.
Right.
Was impeded by having to pay a capacity fee.
Okay.
And this removes an impediment and allows us to run the program again without that financial impediment imposed by the city.
Now, are you speaking to the will-serv aspect of it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just speaking to the, why do we need to extend a makeshift solution or an amnesty program that a lot of cities, including ours, use in order to allow people to take what were substandard or bootlegged second units and bring them in under the code in order to increase housing? Now that we have the state law that says that they can do that anyway, then they're not subject to the same restrictions they were before. So do we need the amnesty provision, or can we dispense with that and just go directly to the will-serv aspect of it?
Well, the will-serv technically, if I, if I may, my understanding is it applies to accessory dwelling units in general, right? Whether or not you're building a new one, or under the non-conforming program, getting permitted for something that may have been, you know, built many decades ago. And, but what we're talking about here is to try and have a better, removing a financial impediment, because I feel that people did not come forward that would have come forward. And I think it's worth one more shot to remove that impediment and see what we can get in terms of participation.
If I could ask, I have a comment, and then I'll ask Mr. Summers. The new law does not address the issue of non-conforming use.
Non-conforming, okay.
Therefore, if we want to allow these amnesties or the non-conforming use, we need to extend the law that we had in place allowing them. The state doesn't address that. They only are addressing conforming uses.
Right.
And from my standpoint, I agree with the Mayor Protem, that a lot of people would not come forward to address their non-conforming use because of the $20,000 hookup fee. And if you take that impediment away, they're more apt to come forward. And I think that's very consistent with our general plan, because we were using those non-conforming second dwelling units as part of our Rena numbers, hopefully to get people to do it. Now, is that an accurate statement, Mr. Summers?
The state law protects both new second units and some existing second units, so that's the one nuance there.
But non-conforming, that you are going to make a second dwelling?
It does protect some of those as well, if you can meet the standard. Recall that the new provision of 65852.E allows a second unit with, or an accessory dwelling unit within an existing single-family residence that's legal, if it's fully within the existing space, and has adequate setbacks on the side and rear for fire safety, and has independent exterior access. So a second unit that exists now, that fits in that category, has to be approved ministerially, but there are the case that there may be some other additional units that don't fit that, particularly they may not have independent exterior access, they instead use interior access, that could be legalized through the second dwelling compliance program. So there's a delta there of some number of units that can't meet that standard under the state law.
That was my question.
But could be legalized under the compliance program.
One covered the other, and you're saying that not completely.
Yeah, it's a Venn diagram, and there's, there's some that's left out.
Okay, adequate explanation, thank you. Okay, shall we take recommendation number one? Is there a motion?
I would, go ahead. Before we start, just, do we have any public comment cards on this?
We didn't, unless, did one?
So I want to just, just for clarification, because people are very interested in this, non-conforming units, could that include yurts, tiny houses, and all these other types of housing units that are now coming out? I mean, there's like a huge variety.
So, yeah, that's a great question. It would depend on exactly what the unit, but to speak to those two examples, a tiny house that's stick-built, affixed to the ground, could qualify if it is fully with, well, if it's going to come in under the current programs, it would have to be sufficiently large to meet the standard. So depending on how big a tiny house is, it may or may not, but the key point is that if it's on wheels...
I understand.
It may, it won't.
How tiny a big house is.
Yeah, exactly. To speak generally, the, for example, the compliance program is, has to be between 220 and 1,200 square feet. So if you had a 225-foot tiny house that was affixed to the ground...
There's all kinds of sizes now.
But it can't be on wheels. There's nothing in the city's current code that permits a tiny house on wheels. That's currently illegal. The council has the power to change that, of course.
Okay.
And yurts would be the same thing. If it's not enclosed, what's the word I want? If it's not a wood or steel or fully solid structure, it wouldn't qualify. These have to be dwelling units, which goes, goes back to the building code definition of buildings that have four walls and a solid structure. Parchment or animal skin-sided yurt would not qualify. Again, the council has the power to approve yurts if you rewrite the code to allow them.
Okay, do I have a motion to extend the?
I'll make one.
Okay, good.
But I'm going to make it slightly different. I, I'm going to make my motion that we extend to March 8, 2019, rather than 18, and just one more shot and be done with it. So that's going to be my motion to extend to March 8, 2019, the second dwelling compliance program with two amendments. One is that every time is that the second dwelling is mentioned in the program guidelines, that in parentheses, we also have accessory dwelling units inserted. And second of all, to be clear about it, that on page 3-14, in application instructions and guidelines, page 6 of 20, that under permit fees, everything be deleted after the words, "Compliance Permit Application Submitted and Found to Be Complete Shall Be Subject to All Appropriate Fees," period. Everything else deleted in that section.
What page?
I missed something.
3-14, page 6 of 20, in the second dwelling compliance program guidelines. In our packet, it's 3-14. To be consistent, it talks, the application guidelines that are part of the program include all the other districts, which is a contradiction to, I think, what we're about to do next. And I would just, right now, just say, delete all the words after, under permit fees, "Compliance Permit Application Submitted and Found to Be Complete Shall Be Subject to All Appropriate Fees."
Does that, does that need to be a part of the motion to extend as a, to amend?
Well, the extension includes these program guidelines.
You could do it in two motions, if you wish. I think the maker of the motion trying to do it is one.
Well, I was thinking, if we can do it, can we, can we extend the, the program and then revise these and bring it back, so we will all just know what?
I'll make it very simple. I move we extend the program to March 8, 2019.
Okay, great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Protam-Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
So.
Okay, now, you, did you want?
I'll make my second motion. In terms of the program guidelines, well, let me back up a little bit. I have, what I'm suggesting to the program guidelines is that they basically be simplified and clarified, and then I have another motion on a resolution about the will serve letters. That's a separate item.
What if we were to take these instructions and just direct it to the staff to work with you and recraft the thing so that they're consistent?
You guys okay with that?
Yeah, that way we-
Absolutely.
Okay, then I have a resolution.
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a resolution to introduce.
Okay.
As a motion.
You're loaded this evening.
I am. I've thought about this a lot.
You came halfway around the world to do this for us, from London, yeah.
I, I have a, I have a resolution I would like to make, a motion to approve, on the item about will serve letters, and it reads as follows. Resolution, in service to the goals of the housing element of the City of Ojai general plan, the City of Ojai recognizes and acknowledges the intent of California State Law SB 1069, otherwise codified under Government Code Section 65852.2, and hereby directs staff not to require a connection fee or capacity charge as a condition of permitting for accessory dwelling units associated with primary dwelling units as defined in this California State Government Code section.
Do we need a second there?
Second.
This doesn't actually-
Can I second? Are you done? Sounds good.
Okay.
Really good.
Well, we got a motion and a second. Wasn't there somewhere in the report that talked about that there was a, another way to verify the capacity or the availability of the utilities?
There is. I understand this resolution to not be answering the will serve question, and I assume that's coming with a perhaps later motion?
No, it's just-
Or is your intention that this builds, this doesn't speak to the will serve question?
No.
This doesn't remove the power of the building official to continue to require will serve letters. Is that your intention?
Okay, well-
It doesn't.
Okay. I'll amend the resolution. Just say hereby direct staff not to require a connection fee or capacity charge or a will serve letter as a condition of permitting. And that doesn't preclude doing a check on the adequacy of the existing plumbing for permitting.
Both the adequacy of the existing plumbing and the availability of existing utility service to the main residence.
Doesn't preclude that at all.
And the building, and the council doesn't have the power to change that, because the building code requires-
Not in my motion.
Okay, and so, and second is okay with that. From the previous discussion and, you know, conversations Bill and I have, traditionally, the building department has been sort of, you should excuse the expression, leg breaker, or the collector, for these fees, so that they get paid. And when the city is where owns the district themselves, or the sanitation aspect of this, or any of the utilities, it's fairly simple from counter to counter. We have a, a separate district, and so in effect, we are in an unclear issue that Paul brought up on the fees. We don't know if those are due or not due under the state law. We've become the collector, collecting agency, without clarifying that. Is that correct?
Yes.
So by us stepping back from it, it doesn't absolve anybody of paying whatever fees they owe, but it's between the property owner and the district, as opposed to having the city being intermediary. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to be, to be clear, and I think, just maybe more for the audience, but the city was never the collector of the sanitary district fee.
No, but they held it hostage-
Understand.
The permit hostage until the fee was paid.
Clearly understand the connection there, right. Just wanted to-
Acting as.
Understand.
Right, the money goes to the agents, the other agency, but the city requires proof of payment.
Or the hammer that was allowed.
We understand, clearly, yes.
We're just saying, we're going to give you a permit-
Right.
-following the intent of state law.
Right.
And it is worth pointing out, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Councilmember Haney?
No, go ahead. I'll, I'll, I have something.
You go ahead, right?
Thank you. The additional point is, built into this is, the city's taking every action
the city would have within your power to reduce the impediments on accessory dwelling units, and thus consistent with your housing element and the general plan. The question then becomes, does it make sense, or would you like to direct staff to warn applicants who receive this permit that they may be subject to another agency's power?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll put together some language for that.
I think there is a disclaimer anyway, saying that whatever we issue is not absolving them of their responsibilities to other jurisdictions.
To give our citizens all the information we can.
Okay, Randy, do you have a comment?
I just had a question, maybe to Matt or to staff, is the effective date of all of this, so in other words, we have a group of people that have already, have submittals in place. Do they get to go along with the, with whatever, whatever motion we make tonight? Or are they subject to past will serve letter conditions?
I would think anything in process means-
I'm, I'm just, want clarification on that.
We would apply this to anything that hasn't yet been approved.
Yeah.
Those that were previously denied, if they meet the requirements, could be submit, if this was their only issue.
Right.
And those that were discouraged could submit.
Okay. Okay, is there any other comment on this? If not, let's have a roll call.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protam-Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, so that, did that take care of both recommendations?
Yes, it does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to the next item, item number 12, which is the paving priorities and sidewalk, and I do have cards on that. So let me see if I can find them.
Want to go with the staff report?
Yeah, we will, but first, I just want to be sure I don't miss any. Okay, I thought I had more than this. Okay, staff report, go Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will turn it over to our Public Works Director, Mr. Greg Grant.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, I'd like to review the condition of the city's streets. We have about 33 miles of streets in the city. Discuss briefly the funding that we have, and also the recommended priority list for the $1.38 million project we have planned for paving this summer, as well as review the sidewalk maintenance program that one of the council members asked about recently. Right now, the city's approximate value for all city streets is about $70 million. That's the 33 miles of streets, the approximate value to rebuild streets from, from the ground up. So that's arguably one of the city's largest assets, and it's sometimes deferred easily. As we all know, I think during the recession, we dropped back on funding significantly as a way to save money, as like a lot of cities did. But obviously, that catches up with us, just like paint on the house or anything else. There's been an increased emphasis on paving the streets in the recent years. We, the way this is assessed in the highway or the street engineering community is with the values called PCIs, and PCIs are Pavement Condition Index. And there's a table in the administrative report that recaps what those values mean. Essentially, 100 is recently a newly paved street, and 0 is a failed street in terrible condition. We do have one alley in the city that's a 0, and we have some 100s from recently being paved. And so back in pre, the recession, as I mentioned, we stopped funding the street paving, and it was really, I think, basically, street funding is an issue in the city, so it hasn't been funded for a long time. So you'll see a lot of streets, you can tell, there's a table attached, a map inside the report, which recaps all of the maintenance done at the streets. You'll find some streets that haven't been touched in 25, 30 years. But in 2014, we now made a new survey of all the streets, doing, getting new pavement condition indexes, and the average, the weighted average of all streets was 53. It's not the highest in the county. In fact, it ranks right near the bottom. The good news is, we're trending upward. We're moving up. And as a comparison, the county has an average PCI value of 76. The City of Ventura is 67. I think they did very similar to us, deferred a lot of maintenance over the past decade plus. Thousand Oaks is at 79. Cam Rio's in the 80s. Fillmore is at 70, and Santa Paul's at 53, right where we are. And one of the issues has always been funding, that, that the average funding, there's a table inside the administrative report that recaps the total funding from the year 2000 to the projected 2020, five-year capital improvement program. And you'll see from 2000 through 2011, there was barely any funding allocated, except for when the era fund was allocated from the feds and the state. So there was two years there, 2009 to 10 was some paving. Since the council's concentration on bringing up the deferred maintenance of the city and allocating 20% of the TOT towards capital improvement programs, we have been working through the city on streets, parks, and all the deferred maintenance around the city. And hopefully, that's evident, that we're improving things. So we're looking, with the funding since that 20% TOT was dedicated to capital improvement programs, to have an average of $500,000 per year dedicated to street paving. So we are trending that PCI value upward. You might have heard that, was it April 6, they just passed the, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, otherwise known as SB 1. So I think people in the public works arena were very aware of it. It did provide substantial funding of $5.2 billion per year statewide. And due to, it's prorated based on the city's population, so the City of Ojai gets approximately $43,000 next year. And we get, that's the first year where it implements the gas tax, and the diesel tax comes in afterwards, and then they've got some licensing fees that come in as well.
I'm sorry, Greg, was that 43,000?
43, but that's only the first year of implementation. After that, we'll see 120 to 140,000 per year. So it's a, it's not what's going to save us, but it'll help. I don't think we'd turn it down. It'll take some minor, it is called the Accountability Act, so there's a requirement to provide plans upfront of what you plan to do for the next couple of years, and then report back that the work was done. So fairly minor administrative costs related to it. So that'll help. If we stick with the $500,000 per year, which we've been doing, average, we're grouping that generally every two years to try to make an efficient paving project, as far as the upfront engineering, as well as the constructibility and getting good competitive bids with a substantial project. That would be 500 plus the one, say, 120, 140, 130 average, so about 630 a year. So every couple of years, we should be able to do a $1.2 million paving project, which would be ideal to trend our pavement condition index upward. There is attached to the administrative report, a multi-year plan, which has proposed paving for this summer's 2017 project, and it also has the 2019 paving projects proposed. There's really a, a major achievement, I think, that's occurring here, and I know we get, I think even a few of the speakers here tonight were concerned about streets, and the council's brought up the idea of dead-end streets. As low-volume streets, they've always been put on low priority. So this year's paving plan allocates money to the worst dead ends that are efficiently achieved, adjacent to priority streets that are being paved. But in 2019, we'll be able to take all of the streets with that proposed paving that are below a 45 PCI, all the dead ends and everything, and go ahead and sweep them in and do a paving job. So I think 2019 will create a lot of happy constituents, essentially, that finally, all those dead ends around town that have been touched. I know that, I think someone sent a letter or emailed the council talking about France Circle, and it was built in 85 and hasn't been touched since 85. So there's quite a few of those around, and that'll be a nice year to have new pavement, get out and bring that PCI.
Be a better year if it got done this year, huh?
What?
It'd be a better year if it got done this year.
Two years, you know, around here, it's quick. It's really quick. So that 2017 paving program is laid out. It is prioritized with an STP. It's the Surface Transportation Program, part of the Federal Highway Administration grant. We were able to obtain $200,000 out of that with a match of $25,000. So those have to be collector arterial streets that are designated by the FHWA. We've got priority higher volumes, higher volume streets with low PCIs that are considered the priority streets, and then we have that portion of dead end and low-volume streets in there that are adjacent. And then we've got a second priority for, if the budget allows, if we get low bids, we can move on to. So that's streets there for your input and comments. And I think, finally, I just want to mention the sidewalk maintenance program is a little bit of achievement, similar to the streets, in that there had been not many trip hazards being removed for a long time around the city. So four years ago, we started spending a good sum of money replacing really poor sections that couldn't be grinded or fixed, because there's a new technology out there which uses a, I think they have a maximum 18-inch blade, and they do a smooth cut parallel to the surface, and you might see those cuts. So they can take a four-inch sidewalk and take it down about two-plus inches while it's still stable there, and you'll see that trim out the whole trip hazard that's there. So we used to have a significant amount of trip hazards in each segment we were going through in the city, and we recently completed a full survey of all the 25 miles of sidewalks in the city, and now we're down to what's considered trivial is less than three-quarters of an inch. Trivial being that it's recognized, you can't have perfect sidewalks, and they're not a high liability issue for the city. They are considered more important and sensitive locations, for instance, around schools, senior housing or high pedestrian downtown areas. So the survey revealed what's in the table. We have about 160 trivial defects, which is actually extremely low from anything we've ever done. We have 23 that are three-quarters of an inch, two inches and quarter, those are more significant. And then greater than one and a quarter, we have some that are only 14. Those can happen relatively quickly with some roots that come up fast during these wet sort of years. And then 30 in censored locations. So our intention is to, we're requesting bids on all of these. The priority will be everything over three-quarters of an inch, and we'll have a secondary alternative bid that will fix the less than three-quarters. So we'll for sure take care of over three-quarter, and possibly all the less than three-quarters. And then the public's crew, public works crew handles the cracks and the holes that are listed there, as well as any excessive slopes. And I thought- And I thought as a nice way to kind of recap it, this graphic shows what's been paved around the city over the past five years or so. So you can see a little bit older was the aqua blue, I guess you'd say, for color. And then in 2015, we did the paving in red. And then the proposed paving for this summer is in the dark blue. And then we've got the proposed paving for 2019, which will go around, you'll see a lot of dead ends being taken care of in that year. And that's all the green. So you really see a lot of the city come together, and that does pull, anything that was in that 2014 survey with a PCI less than 45 has been taken care of through the 2019. And so that gets us pretty close to that ranking of a decent, a good decent street. Although, as the years pass, they're fading downwards, so that's the importance of keeping them moving, keeping the overlay paving program progressing forward. On that note, be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for the Public Works Director?
Mayor Johnson? Two quick questions. Number one, so my understanding, again, the council concern was, when we're doing an arterial collector, and we've got a, you know, an adjacent or contiguous dead end, that we're not going to widow these things. We're going to get them done, because you're already staged, you're already there. And I assume we're going to continue that. In other words, we're not going to be doing any collector arterial with a little, with a, you know, with a widowed cul-de-sac. That's gone. That's, we're not doing that anymore. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, you can see it here on Signal Street, for instance. You go up and you can see France Circle. You can see Park, and also Olive being taken care of, these very low-volume streets.
Right. But so basically, we're doing that. We're not, if we're there doing the collector arterial, we're going to do the cul-de-sacs too.
That's correct.
That's going to be our practice.
And I think you can see it clearly there, yes.
My second question had to do with sidewalks. You talked about repair of existing. I, you know, I keep having this image of driving on Ojai Avenue and watching a person in a wheelchair trying to get from Capri to a paved sidewalk. And I was embarrassed for our city, you know, on the dirt. What are we doing about some of these gaps on pedestrian path of travel?
All right. So number one, the ATP grant for all of Ojai Avenue, and very minuscule amount of Maricopa Highway, because Maricopa Highway has practically all sidewalks. But it'll take care of those all the way out to Gridley. It'll take care of the sidewalks. Within the city, we have some outstanding grants, and the Complete Streets Committee has a task right now where they're taking the map and trying, we're trying to prioritize what areas to do sidewalk infills around town here.
Okay.
We can, if that's a priority-
We are addressing that in real time, not just deferring it forever.
Yes, but I mean, the amount of money available for those sidewalk infills for grant money is about $40,000. We could allocate more, but it does chip away at other programs. But we could, if it's a focus, work on them. Some of the remaining sidewalks, of course, are difficult to do.
I understand that. But it's, it's still, it's kind of an ethical thing in my mind. I'd appreciate some information from you on that as we get into our next budget cycle. May want to make some choices there.
When there's easy pickings, we grab them. For instance, you think of Aliso Street, and we paved it a couple of years ago, right by, right by the farmer's market. We did a sidewalk infill up there. And so we'll try to keep looking carefully when we're paving what we can do for adjacent sidewalks.
Okay. Are we ready for public comments? Jill Shanbrom? Hi, Jill.
Jill Shanbrom. I live at 260 France Circle. And I won't read my comments, since I'm hoping what I just understood from Mr. Grant is that France Circle will be considered one of those adjacent cul-de-sac dead-end streets that will be paved. I will only point out that there are a lot of streets like that, that get more than the use that the residents on the street would normally have. In our case, for example, lots of people park on our street because of the status of North Signal Street, that section of North Signal Street that has no sidewalks and has an open three-foot drainage ditch along the side of the street. So whenever there's any sort of project on North Signal Street in that area, the project trucks use our cul-de-sac as a turnaround. They park there, park equipment there. And in fact, when the recent gas main was repaired on North Signal Street, that's where the staging was for the whole project for a couple of months. So as you go forward, some of those dead-end streets that may not seem to be a high priority might get more use than you would expect. And the wear and tear belies the fact that there's only a few families living there. So I appreciate you, Mr. Grant, putting us on the map, so to speak. We look forward to getting our repairs. Thank you.
And thanks for your input, really.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Dave Catlin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm Dave Catlin. I live on 1206 San Ramon Way. And I want to say that I found out that our road is going to be repaired. And I just want to say, this road is so hammered, it is beyond, we're on dirt now. So I'm really appreciative that we're on the list. And Greg Grant, I've been on Greg's butt for five years, and we've got to be good friends.
Very good friends, yeah.
And this guy is a real asset to the city. I really feel he's polite, he's professional, and when I call him, he calls me. And I'm just so glad that our road is being done. So I just wanted to tell you guys that I'm glad this is being done. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you. And I would add to polite and professional, patient. Very patient fellow. Okay, Deborah McCombs?
My name's Deborah McCombs. I live at 407 Los Alamos Drive. I'm also glad that our street is on the list, because it is, there's weeds, it's gravel. I appreciate that we are put on that list. I also want to make a comment about the sidewalks, because I walk sidewalks a lot, and they are a lot better than they were. So I'm glad to hear that that's also on your list for improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. Anything else from the council?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interject before the speaker. I'm sorry, there's one correction I'd like to make on the paving program. And that was for 2017, there was, on Valerio Street, there's a section from Descanso North to Correo South that was already paved in 2010. So there's only supposed to be a stub on each end of it. It's the dead-end section over by Hermosa, and the section over by Maricopa Highway that should be in there. But the center portion should not be in there. And so I was hoping to pull that out anyways in the 2017 proposed paving plan. Hope that makes sense. Okay.
One question. Do I understand that the France Circle will be paved right along with Signal Street when you get there?
Yes. And that's all that dark blue on the map, that's everything be done. The mistake that I'm talking about is, right here should have been in there, should have been there, but this portion in the middle was already paved in 2010. We should not have had that in there.
Okay. And the paving program for Signal Street is scheduled to begin when?
This summer. All that dark blue is this summer.
Okay, great.
And there's a schedule on the administrative report.
I had a couple of questions for Greg.
Okay, we have one more. We got a late card here. Is it, is it Moller?
Yes.
Yeah, Chris, come on up.
Hi. Mayor, City Council, I just want to thank you for having France Circle. I'm a resident, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, I am, I'm very pleased that we're going to do France Circle.
We hear about it every-
No, I certainly am, because that was named, you know, for a very dear person in this community. And, you know, just sort of symbolically, when you go out there, if you ever go out there, you realize that not only was 30 years since, or over 30 years since anybody did anything, but everybody else uses it. None of that would have happened by just the few people fronting on the street. And to have it in that kind of shape, you know, with Vince France leaving us, leaving the planet this year, you know, it seems, well, I was going to ask if nothing else, we should get it paved in his honor. And thank you, Greg, for your work. Okay.
I had a couple of comments.
Randy?
I just, Greg, first of all, thank you for all that you do. And what the gentleman said publicly is, I agree wholeheartedly as a citizen and as a council person. You just do an incredibly good job for us. Just a great job. But.
And you know the rule, Greg. Anything after or before the but, you know, is, forget it.
So I'm still seriously concerned about our sidewalks. And I'm just going to take my neighborhood as an example. I walk it probably three, four nights a week, my wife the other times. And I, and we have a neighborhood now flush with babies and baby carriages and toddlers. And I just see so many trip and falls. And that's my concern. And that's the concern that I hear from them, is why can't we do something in a more preventative manner? Personally, in front of my house, I repaired, I took my own sidewalk out and put it back in a couple of years ago. I still have another area that's lifted that I'll call city sidewalk. And it's lifted a good inch. I'm tempted to take an orange marker, and every night, just as I walk, just start marking cracks and curbs and lifts. But our neighborhood is decimated. So when I see 25 miles of sidewalk, and I see 300 incidents of lifting, cracking, or of problems, I just, I can't put those numbers together when I think I see nightly 300. So, so again, maybe I'd like to see your stats. That would be one thing. And then the other thing, getting back to a, to a street that hasn't been paved in 28 years, surely we have some stats on when these streets have been paved, when the last time they had received an overlay, you know, things of that nature. We've got to have a record of that, and I'd like to see that, too. I just think it's, it's just not in our best, it's not in our interest to have a street go 28 years without some type of resurfacing or some type of action.
But we, the council, do the appropriating, not the Public Works Director. He just spends the money. We got to come up with it. And in most communities, sidewalks are the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. This, this town makes an extra effort trying to help out, but there's not adequate money to do all of it. So we, not, without the but, good work.
And I'd like to mention, attached to the administrative report, I did address that concern the council had. And there is, that map, it's broken into four 11 by 17s for detail, and that shows when the last paving was done. It might have been a slurry, it might have been a paving, but it's all shown on that map, as well as the PCI, that index from 0 to 100 for all the streets. So if you look at the attachments, they're there.
I mean, this map here, this is such fine print that even when I put my glasses on, I can't see it. But-
I got a lot of heat for going 11 by 17s, but it's about as big as-
You know, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to disagree with what you're doing. In fact, I think what you're doing is incredibly well for this community. It's just exceptional. I just have to, I just feel I'd be negligent as a council person if I didn't bring to the attention of our, of our city engineer, these defects in our sidewalks. And, and I agree with, with Mayor Johnson, that we do, we are, we're the ones in charge of the funding. But that doesn't mean we should take a backseat to it. And, and again, I would like to figure out how we could do more, not less regarding sidewalks in our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to mention, too, that there is a map that we're putting out to bid, which has all of the locations of these. So I'd be glad to review that with you. It'd be a good check if there's-
I would appreciate that.
Okay, guys, you can visit with the Public Works Department office, where you'll have a bigger map that we can actually read the fine print.
Okay.
Item number five, is that right?
We need to go ahead and-
Need to make a motion here, Mayor.
We want to approve the plan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the 2017 paving project, a multi-year pavement plan, and authorize staff to proceed with preparation and bid documents for the 2017 paving project.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. And any further discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Before we end this, I just want to say, you know me, my vision is a car-free city where we don't need sidewalks, and a permeable paved city. The whole city, permeable. That's the city of the future. But I see it.
You have good eyesight, yeah. Okay, we have-
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Just to, just to clarify, the motion that was approved, did it include all four recommendations that were in the staff report? I didn't hear all four, so wanted to be clear.
I'll make an additional motion that all four recommendations in the staff report be approved.
I'll resecond.
Thank you.
Roll call again.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, how are we to, item number five. Steve, do you have a report here for us?
Yes, very briefly. At the, at the April 11 council meeting, council did hear a presentation from Mr. Angelo Spandrio regarding water and drought issues affecting the city and the Ojai Valley. As part of that, the council asked that we come back at this meeting with a discussion and direction to staff on the formation of an Ojai Water Advisory Board. And we do have a paper in here that was put together by Mr. Spandrio for the council's consideration. So we're looking for some direction on that. And then, secondly, also looking for some direction to staff on a proposed request for quote, for a state water project alignment study for a Ventura-Ojai interconnection. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? If not, I have two cards. Larry Yee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council and city staff. Larry Yee, 306 Del Norte Road. Thank you for taking the Water Advisory Group under discussion tonight. The draft that you received with the agenda packet was something that we did in a hurry to meet the deadline for the agenda. What I just passed out is a more evolved addition of what you received. And we've changed the name from Water Advisory Board to Water Advisory Group, simply because there are a number of water boards throughout the valley, and we didn't want to create any confusion. And besides, as an acronym, it's just easier to say wag than wab. Now Angelo set the wheels in motion when he suggested at your last meeting that a Water Advisory Board be formed. But it's actually a little premature tonight to even discuss the Water Advisory Group, because even though the founding members have all agreed to serve, the group has yet to have its first meeting. So the proposal in front of you is just the latest draft and a straw thing that we can begin to work with. You know, the impetus for this was Angelo and I decided that there was probably a much more effective way than operating as Lone Rangers, you know, in regards to water issues here in the valley. And it'd be much more effective to form some kind of community group that would add a higher degree of organization, recognition, and effectiveness to our efforts. So we decided to put together this Water Advisory Group, and we've asked three others to serve with me and Angelo. And the other three add considerable firepower and credibility to, to our little group, and that's Rosalie Sabella, Richard Hages, and Peter Thelke. So what I'd like to do for the next minute or so is just to very briefly walk you through the proposal that I just handed out to you. The first page describes our, simply describes our water situation, provides you some background for the formation of the Water Advisory Group. And just to very quickly summarize, you know, with the exception of some pretty decent rains that we got this year, we're basically still in the same situation. The rains simply brought us more time to better plan and prepare, because whether or not the drought is over or, in our case, lessened, water scarcity is our future, as Renee Roth has pointed out to us. And what that means is that we have to change our thinking about water and make the necessary adjustments, adjustments as individuals and as a community. For instance, we know we need to increase our water reliability and diversify our water source portfolio. And, you know, the latest welcome change to our water situation that I want to mention tonight is that Golden State will soon be history. And while I have the floor, I would just like to extend my- just like to extend my congratulations and deep appreciation to Ojai Flow for their unrelenting dedication, leadership, and persistence in effecting this takeover. The second, yeah, you can clap. We all should clap. The second little section is about the rationale for the Water Advisory Group. And, you know, we basically think that the current approach to water issues in the Ojai Valley has largely been one of reaction. And it's been fragmented with various individuals like myself and Angelo who have become engaged and involved. And we simply think that there's a more organized, effective, focused, and strategic approach, and that's why we're proposing this Water Advisory Group. The next section talks about the purpose of the Water Advisory Group. And simply stated, it says, "The Ojai Valley Water Advisory Group is an independent body whose purpose is to advise and assist the Ojai City Council in particular, and the Ojai Valley in general, on all waters related to matter." And there are listed a number of bulleted items that we thought we could work on. And that is followed by an initial scope of work, some things that we think are real priority items to begin to, to do our work. So that's what you have in front of you. I'd be happy, and Angelo would be happy, to answer. Any questions? Thank you.
So it's my understanding, I think I just heard you say you're an independent of the city council, you're an advisory group. And so one question I have is, this is a wonderful, solid group of people that you have. I'm aware there's at least one other person that has spoken with Angelo, and that would be Michael Haley. So I wanted to pass out his, just some background, if he might want to, or can people, I guess what I'm asking, people can, can attend your group and if they have the qualification?
We haven't even figured that out yet.
You haven't even figured that out.
I just learned today that Mr. Haley has volunteered to join the group. And I think that would be wonderful. I think we first need, the five founding members first need to meet and just talk about kind of who we are and what we want to do. And then, at that point, to invite people like Mr. Haley. And so-
I'm absolutely thrilled that you're doing this. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. I haven't told my wife yet, but-
Mr. Mayor, I, I might, I'm looking at this in a maybe too simplistic fashion, but why is this before us? They're an independent group. They can form. They can come in and give us advice whenever they want to. What does the city have to do with the formation of an independent group? I mean, what are we asked? Is it going to become like a commission?
No, I don't think so. The question, I guess, should be directed at the founders-
Well, no, but it's on our agenda.
I know, but it was asked to be put on the agenda by members of the council last meeting. Isn't that right, Bill?
Yes, it was.
Well, maybe I can ask-
So it is here. And I think part of it is, the reason it is here, is I think Angelo, Larry, and other people that are interested in the subject were sort of wanting to get some sort of reaction, as well as recognition. Or, I think, when I talked to Angelo, we were talking about publicity, or to let people know that there is a group that is interested in having a broader look at this. How many agencies do we have in this valley? Something like 20-
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So we got two dozen groups that range all the way from us, who don't produce, transport, sell. All we do is use water. And then we got all these other organizations. The idea was, as I understood it, talking with Angelo and Larry, that they were trying to come up with a concept where people who were knowledgeable and who had the larger region in mind to become a resource to all of us. And we're only one of those 25. But as you know, I always think of the fiddler on the roof with Tevye, you know, when he does that, "I know, Lord, that we are the chosen people, but why must you always choose us?" You know, we're city council. People come from everywhere to let people know that they're out there and they want to help. So I think that's kind of it. But Larry, do you want to?
Sure. Well, initially, we thought, maybe if we were somehow formally attached to the city, that that would give us more legitimacy. But then, as we thought more about it, we thought, no, we don't want to add another bureaucratic layer. We don't want to have to jump through all the kinds of hoops that commissions and formal bodies have to jump through. And so we thought, let's, let's not do that, and let's just be an independent group, similar to Ojai Flow, I guess. Would, you know, just take a page out of their gamebook in terms of how they have served the community. So-
I actually, yeah, I think the group could be more influential that way. In answer to your question, Paul, if we were to, you know, kind of charter the group, or if the county of Ventura were to charter the group, I think that it would create an impression that we were trying to steer this group, as opposed to creating a resource for everybody to come together. We've got Lake Casitas, we've got the groundwater basin, we've got all sorts of little operations. And it just seems like it's a good idea, but I don't know what we're expected to do this evening, other than to take the information in and understand that this is-
Yeah, this is basically an FYI now.
Yeah.
And, you know, instead of, instead of, you know, asking for your approval, just ask for your blessing and-
Thank you.
Clarifies it for me?
Well, that, I think you answered my question, if I might, is whether you thought it would be, any sort of endorsement or support from us would helpful, be helpful. I mean, I'm not, in other words, I understand exactly what you're saying. And the issue is, I think you have a council that's willing to be supportive and helpful in a way that you feel it would be, or your group would feel it would be. So whether or not you want anything tonight in terms of support, or whether or not you want to come, after you get going, and come back to us, and, well, you could help us this way, I think we'd be very receptive, either tonight or in the future. So is, you think any action at all would be helpful tonight?
I don't think any action is necessary to you, Angelo.
All right.
Not, I just think that once we meet as a group, and we begin to figure out what we're really all about, then we'll come back and make a presentation and ask you for money then, or something.
Is that helpful generically?
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, you know, during, during the election, we talked a lot about having a board, just a one board, where everything related to water, you know, they would, what's the word, vet it, or they would, you know, analyze it. So I guess I'm looking also, hoping that this will be a group that, just like a citizen group, that monitors development, everything that's before the planning commission, that you look at it in terms of water.
We'll certainly do our best. You know, we're all volunteers, and we're all limited with some time. But we'll do our best. We just simply want to be your cavalry.
Yeah, no, no-
And meet the standard of Ojai Flow and effectiveness, right?
Yes, yes, exactly.
I have one more card. Are there other questions, Larry?
I just have one thing for Larry. Larry, if I remember correctly, you and Angelo and William and I, what was it, six months ago, we're sitting having breakfast at, what's the-
Was it that long ago?
Yeah. Is that interesting, in that it's taken six months for this to come to fruition? And I'm extremely happy that you and Angelo have decided to tackle this. You're both very smart gentlemen. I don't see this being anything but positive. And again, taking the page out of flow, if you could meet with, with their board, instead of reinventing the will, I think that they have a lot of insights that could help you with getting this grassroots effort moving forward.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. And as you can see, Richard Hages, who was the principal with that group, is going to be a member of-
We had lunch with him today.
Oh.
He has a lot of great comments for, for this group.
Wonderful, wonderful, excellent.
Well, thank you, Larry. And it's a, it's a welcomed resource. And based upon, as I say, the trustworthiness and the quality of the advice that comes out of any organization determines how influential. And this is a great opportunity to reach beyond any one of the 24, 25 jurisdictions, and maybe get us all, you know, working together. So, Christine.
No, I, that's okay. I'm really just, after what I-
Oh, okay. Well, thank you. Yeah. Okay, well, that takes us to-
There's a second portion of this, item six.
Oh, there's a second.
Pardon me, five.
There's a second. I'll get there. Okay, discuss and provide direction to staff, oh, on the RFQ, right, okay?
May I, Mayor Johnson?
Certainly.
First of all, I think that when this was put on there for discussion, it included not just the Ventura-Ojai interconnection, but also looking at the option of the Santa Barbara-Ojai connection as well, is that was, you know, part of our discussion, because that came out of seminars and forums, where the Santa Barbara water, as well as agency, in other words, agencies east and west of Lake Casitas have expressed an interest in integrating the reservoir into overall storage options and distribution options. So I just want to make that point about how it wasn't limited to just Ventura-Ojai. And I just want to mention that my, my, I'm just not sure about the path forward here, because I think part of what we would hope for is this Water Advisory Group maybe coming to us with thoughts about, well, you know, here's something the city should be doing, or, and so on and so forth. But on the other hand, there's a real-time issue with this, because one of the reasons that we were considering this is to look at what our options are with the city in terms of exploring ways of interconnecting that are not being looked at by anyone else. And, but it's a real chicken and egg problem right now, whether or not, what should be our role here. We, the very fact that we're talking about this points out the need for a Water Advisory Group, because we don't have an organized inquiry going on from anyone else right now.
Well, we do have, the council does have a, that 10-point plan that actually did grow out of conversations with Angelo, and this is the next step.
My question is whether we proceed with getting quotes or not.
Yeah, my, my, yeah, I guess, well, I would think that, you know, proceeding now is fine, if in fact it is no cost. If it's, if it's cost, then I think we got to think a little bit more about it. The, I guess my skepticism, and I don't know if there's anyone here who can answer it, but maybe we just ask, and if we get slapped, we get slapped. If not, we get some more information. But the, since we do not have jurisdiction over the locations of any of this, that if I were the engineering firm, I would, you know, probably not want to spend a lot of time on it, because they're in business to make money, not just to give advice.
Well, Mayor, that was one of the points that was brought up today, is, and I agree with you on that, is, well, two points. First of all, is the state water connection the best option? Right now, it seems like the only option. But that's because it's got the forward momentum right now. So it seems like we need to hop on it. The second thing is the jurisdiction. We can come up with all the studies we want, we can come up with all the funding we want. We don't have any jurisdiction over any of these bodies to tell them to actually do the tie-in. The only thing that we have is the ability to bring the public to the table and allow the citizens of this community to be aware of what could be or what needs to be done, and give them facts. So that's, those two things come up real clear today. Mr. Mayor, and what we're asked to do tonight is to, is to do a request for quote. Well, that's going to take some staff time to do.
Right.
I don't know what the cost is, but it's going to cost us something. So we're going to get a quote. And we're going to get a quote for what? We're going to get a quote as to what we can do that we have no control over. And that's, and if we then go out for the quote, what are we getting a quote for? I mean, they're going to do a study, but once we get the quote, we're going to have to pay for whatever that study is. I'm not sure.
Well, somebody's going to have to pay for it. I think the idea was, and Angelo might be able to shine a little light, I thought the, the idea, whether or not it works, is another question, but was to get a little more information, is, you know, what is the size of what we're, you know, talking about? But will somebody give us an estimate on that without doing, you know, I don't know how much information we're going to get without them needing to be paid by someone. And the responsibility fundamentally for the connections lies with the Casitas Municipal Water District. But I think it was just the, Angelo might be able to, because it was his thought, he spoke to us. Come on up.
At this point in time, nothing is being done concerning a state water connection that's going to get water to Ojai. Casitas is dealing with Ventura in an offhanded manner. They're, they've been on record, I think, with Mr. McClary, saying that they're in discussions with Ventura about moving water across in a westerly direction in Ventura. Well, that's great. Ventura's taking care of that anyway. They're building new pipelines across Ventura to get water, more water, to the west side of Ventura. Nothing is being done, nothing is being done about what is it going to take to get water to Ojai via a state water connection. The purpose, my point in this RFQ is, since Casitas is refusing, refusing to take Ojai's interests into consideration on moving state water up the hill, let's go out and ask the same contractor to give us a quote for what the study would cost to bring water up the hill. If Kennedy Jinx cooperates and gives us a quote, come back and say, okay, it's going to cost $75,000 for us to come up with an engineering study to bring water up the hill. In my opinion, that puts us one step closer to knowing what it's going to take to get state water up the hill. Right, we have no jurisdiction. We can't put in that pipe. We can't even fund it, probably. But, but we have a document now. We have a piece of paper. We have a report saying this is what it's going to cost to do an engineering study to get water up the hill. So we go back to Casitas and say, okay, we need $75,000. I don't know what their position is going to be, or what their point is going to be. It's not going to cost us anything. They're, in my opinion, there's very little staff work involved. In my opinion, the RFQ is written, and you have it in your package. That RFQ also addresses the potential for hooking to Santa Barbara. I've been trying for the past two weeks to talk with the water manager in Santa Barbara, and haven't been able to contact him. But that's part of this request for quote, saying we're also interested in a westerly connection into the city of Santa Barbara. So I don't know what kind of cooperation we're going to get out of Kennedy Jinx. There are a lot of unknowns. But the point is, it's not going to cost this body, or this city, any money to get one step closer. And now we know this is how much money it's going to cost to do an engineering study. It puts a focus on state water to Ojai. It tells the world, it tells our little world, that, yeah, we're concerned about that. And this public should be concerned about that, if we're going to have any consideration to hooking up the state water. This moves us one step closer with more information. It gives us something to wave in front of, and Casitas should have the responsibility for doing this. They've refused. So at least we can get a request for quote, take this back to them, wave it in front of their face, and say, okay, are you guys going to fund this or not?
I'd like to add two things to that. First of all, I don't know how much the community is aware, but we have already been paying for state water, to the tune of, what, $76 million to date. We've already been paying for something we haven't received. So I don't even know if the community is aware of that, but we are. The second, the second thing is, I'd like to have Russ Baggerly, who is our representative on Casitas Municipal Water, come here and actually explain to us and the community why they didn't pursue this tie-in on the original study. I think that'd be the first place to start, along with, if we choose to, to do the RFQ white paper.
I'd like to change the tone, maybe, of the conversation. If this body wants to ask Kennedy Jinx or any other engineering firm if they'd give us a price for, for doing the job, that's great. They may or may not be interested. I think when it gets into things about interjurisdictional, laying anything on Casitas or anybody else, I think we ought to, we are not as well-informed, maybe, as we should be. We have paid for water availability and the right to have that water that we have never needed up until now. So it's not like we bought the water and somebody else got it. We did not say no to the, our prorated share of the whole project when the state water system came into being. And because we never hooked up, we, and we never drew any. But in 92 or 91, whenever that drought was, Casitas was full, and they were the savior for most of the area. So it wasn't getting water up the hill then, we had the water. So I think we ought to, at least I would hope that, well, our rhetoric should be very careful, because we need the cooperation of everybody. And everybody independently thinks they're doing a really good job. And the difficulty is, is that collectively, the job's not being done, which is, I think, the point that you have made many times when I've spoken with you, Angelo, that we got to find a way to try to help nudge everybody to get in the game and start doing their part. to get in the game and start doing their part. Okay? So maybe this is the way to go about it. I'm not sure how much information we'll get, but it'll be more than we have right now, and I think that.
Well, it's not going to cost us to find out. And maybe, maybe we would end up with that nudge that we could use.
Okay, so Paul, is that pretty much kind of, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's exactly the way I feel.
It's like chicken soup, you know? Can't hurt.
Right, yeah. No, I mean, I agree.
If you don't ask, you don't receive.
Yeah, that's right. You got to ask.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and say, let's nudge, and I'll move that for the purpose of consideration that we endorse submitting the RFQ attached to Kennedy Jinx consultants. Period.
Okay, so we have a motion to nudge. Do we have a second to that?
We got a second.
Okay, we got a second, not around you. Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, call a roll.
Mayor Protem Weyrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Rahaney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Aye to nudging.
Thanks, Angelo.
Thank you.
Nudge from the judges.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Angelo. Appreciate it. And good luck, guys. Good luck.
Okay, we got designating a voting delegate to the Southern California Association of Governments. We have an invitation to participate. Do we have any candidates for this particular task? I unfortunately have a scheduling conflict.
Yeah, I do too.
Or I would be willing to go, but is there anybody else?
I have one too. I already have a commitment here in town.
Susan?
And it's a great hotel out there.
Yeah.
When is it, on my birthday?
I don't know.
No, it's in May, the beginning of May.
May 4th through May 5th.
Go have a night on the town.
I'm sure you just love Palm Springs.
Can I ride my bike there?
Well, what if we were to designate you, and you can choose later whether you can attend? Because I think everybody else.
There's nobody else that can do it.
Yeah, I.
I cut conflicts.
I, I'm fortunate.
Cut conflicts, come on. Well, I have conflicts. I teach on those days.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, well, it's not essential that we be there. Maybe we're just, next time, we'll be ready.
You know, if it really is essential, and it's a life-death thing, nobody else.
It's not, I would not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we cool?
It is a.
It's council's pleasure, so.
It's a meeting, it's a, it's a convention that's really nice to go to, particularly if you haven't been to one in a while. But it's not imperative that anybody go, and the voting delegate votes along with every other city.
Yeah, it's a general assembly kind of thing. It's huge, yeah.
I have been, you know, previously.
I'll save some money.
Yeah, so I'd say, if nobody can go, it's not any problem for me.
Do you see any problem?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not at all.
Okay, well, shall we just table that until next year?
Yeah, I'll go next year, okay? You can, it's on tape.
Okay, the next item is the scheduling recesses of the council. And City Manager, you want to?
Yes, again, typically, the council will recess for one or two meetings during the summer months. We bring this to you early on so that staff and the council members can plan accordingly. Again, there's no requirement that the council cancel any meetings, however, it's helpful for staff and other members to be able to plan and take some time off without directly affecting city business. Do want to note that if the council does cancel any regular meetings and there is a need to take action, that a special meeting can be called by the mayor with a 24 hours notice. We just picked through very quickly the two regular meeting dates in July, and August, and September. Certainly, the city could consider other dates for recess. We would not consider doing anything in June simply because we're working through the budget adoption at that time. Also want to note, and it certainly could be changed, but we have a joint meeting scheduled with the Park and Recreation Commission for the Tuesday, August 8th meeting. Have to answer your questions.
Does anybody have any preferences?
I would think that we would want to take August 22nd off if there's no other reason. I mean, you know, yeah, just because it's the end of summer.
Okay, I'd second that. I think that's a good.
What's everybody's feeling? We usually have one or two that we cancel in the summer.
Probably two.
Yeah? Do you have a second?
Ooh, wow.
What about, what about September 12th?
I feel, it's funny, I feel like this is the House of Representatives as they take a three-month recess. This is three months.
We're not proposing three months of breaks.
But it's three months here on the paper. I'm looking at this going.
You have to go back to your district and campaign, you know? Tell them what you've been doing.
Yeah.
I have no preference. I'm gone the first week of August, but I'll be back August 8th.
Well, so what if we did the 22nd and the 26th of September in order to have a meeting in between unless somebody's planning a vacation? I'm fine.
And we can change our mind, right? If something is urgent, not to, you know?
Absolutely, sure.
I just feel so guilty.
Sure, if we put a cancellation notice out and we were to rescind that, right.
You can rescind that up to three days before. Thank you.
Oh, well, why don't we just throw in July 25th in too? You know what, we're throwing it in just for GP.
I like, I like September 26th on August 22nd.
Okay, okay, so we've got.
So one meeting each month for those three months?
Yeah, or those two months, right?
I heard two dates.
I was serious.
What are you saying, July what? Randy actually does want to be like the House of Representatives.
He wants to be like the House of Representatives.
You know, if that's what we're going to do, let's do it. Let's not, you know, I remember the first year that we, that we sat on this and I saw all these dates, I went, how are we going to get anything done? But.
Now you don't care because you don't think we get anything done?
Oh, no. Like I said, personally, no, seriously, personally, I wouldn't take any of these days off. But, no.
I would only, personally, I would only take August 22nd off. But if there's nothing urgent, I'm fine, take a day off, sure.
I like the two that have been discussed.
It's fine.
Okay, I do too. Okay, should we have a vote on those? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it'd be a vote to adopt the resolution with the, with the dates so chosen by council.
And we'll excuse you, Randy, if you want to take another day off.
Yeah, I'll call in.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion on that? If we do, so moved.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
So what were those dates again?
August 22nd.
August 22nd and September 26th.
And September 26th.
You trying to confuse us, Randy?
Nope, just clarifying.
Oh, okay.
Want the public to know, we won't be here.
Okay, okay. There's any objection to that if not, we'll so order?
No objection.
Okay, great. I think we've reached the, oh, no, we have some council member reports, City Manager report. Let's go with council. Paul, you have anything?
No.
Bill?
Yeah, Mayor Johnston, two things. One is, I am planning to attend the 85th anniversary of the Harrison Industries and CNG station ribbon cutting.
Good, thank you.
That I, I'm happy to represent the city if my colleagues are okay with that.
Yeah, I think that's great.
At their, so on May 2nd, so I put that on my calendar, just letting everybody know.
Okay, good.
If somebody else wants to, Nan Drake, of course, wants to know if, if more of us will be there, you know, and I think I'll, I'll just tell her that, you know, one's enough.
Tell them you're representing the city and the others will be there with you if they can, if their schedules permit. Yeah, now, did she say there was some kind of a, they would like to have something from the city?
Oh, they, proclamations and things like that, but I, I.
Okay, we'll, we'll have one for you.
Is this held where they do their recycling?
And, well, and also where they're powering their, they're reducing carbon footprint by powering their vehicles with.
Natural gas.
Natural gas and methane, organic-based digesters, you know, landfill gas.
Does it include a tour? Do you get to go see everything?
No, it's not a tour.
It's at their site, yeah. Their CNG station.
I'm sure they'll do a mini tour, but it's not the tour.
They'd be happy to show you around.
Please join me.
Yeah, I might go with you.
Great, absolutely. I have a special interest in it because of the landfill for the regional, Ventura Regional Sanitation District is upping the biosalads deposition, and that means more methane coming off. And there's several technical issues I'll get into with you at some point.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, so.
And then, we'll have one more item and I'll be, I'll be done. Yeah, on the matter of this Kappa and so on and so forth, since I've made the motion, I just wanted to say that my intent was not to be overly specific with that motion. I think it's appropriate as a council member report to report my perception of that. The idea was just that, you know, these two groups to just, however they wanted to, to get together and give us our input. I wasn't trying to be a straightjacket in any way. I was meant to be facilitative. However those two groups want to do it, I think that's fine. I don't care. Personally, the intent of the motion was not to say it had to be the entire two commissions getting together. It was the two commissions to decide between them how they want to give us input on the Gates Project. And I don't understand why, I just want to clarify that was the intent of the motion.
I understood that to be the intent, and if Kappa or whatever it is wants to participate or, everybody just get together in a room and settle it.
And I was the, I believe I seconded the motion. And that was my impression, that even though we said, we said Arts Commission, it didn't mean literally it had to be the Arts Commission. If, if Kappa was the proper entity to be part of that discussion group, that was fine with me. I mean, I didn't think it was specific that we were disallowing Kappa to participate.
Yeah, my feeling was is that the, both of the commissions could bring anybody they wanted, but they just needed to work it out.
So generally, what happens in these instances is, staff needs direction how to conduct this meeting and, and how to direct commissions. I think that's where the Gray got involved in it. So again, staff probably right now needs to hear completely what you would like them to do. Should they tell CAP, should they tell the Arts Commission that it should be Kappa? Or, or are we just allowing them to meet? You know, that's what I'm trying to say is, I just.
I don't think, I don't think it's that formal. I think all they need to do is have a date and a time, and the Arts Commission can come en masse or, and bring Kappa along or whatever they want to do, and the same thing for the other commission, and they should just iron this thing out.
And I think there's no intent that has to be.
So with that intent in mind, maybe, I'm sorry, but maybe the, maybe the direction should be that we set it to the chair of each commission to, to come, let them talk about how they want to get this done, and let them, let the chairs actually designate what they're going to do, how they're going to do it, and then get back to us in a timely manner. I think that's what the goal was.
Okay.
So let's let the chairs do it.
Okay, fine, that was.
Clear to staff, thank you.
Okay, good.
That's fine.
Okay, let's see, Randy, do you have a report?
Um, no, I don't have any reports, but I do have something for the future agenda.
Okay, Susan, do you have a?
Oh, I don't have a report yet, but I just noticed that I got there, we received 10 letters asking us to make Ojai pesticide and cruelty-free zone, a humane city, and pesticide-free. So they must have had a campaign, but in case those people are listening, I am meeting next Thursday with Patty Pagelin, I think it's Transition Ojai, because they've been working on, and we're in touch, another associate of mine, we're in touch with the people in Malibu who've made Malibu pesticide-free, and we're planning to bring a film to Ojai about mountain lions. It's a little premature, but by next meeting, I'll tell you about that because the concern is second, not just poisoning the squirrels, but secondary poisoning. So, anyway, if they're watching, I'm on it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have anything specific to report, so let's go to the items for the next agenda.
We have City Manager's report.
Oh, pardon me, I'm sorry, Steve. I'm letting you off.
It's quite all right.
Well, I'm not going to let you off.
He's on the hook for a couple of things he's got to talk about.
I have nine things I want to talk about.
Oh.
So, real quick, just obviously, the tennis tournament is starting up this week, so hooray for that. It's always good to see them back. May 20th, we have our annual Recreation Department Open House, so just again, want to put that invitation out to the mayor and to the city council. I believe we're going to be doing a ribbon cutting at that event for the new picnic shelters out there. So again, it's always a fun and a well-attended event, so that'll be on Saturday, May 20th at Sarsotti Park. Moving on to my third item, we did send a letter out to the Ojai businesses last week regarding signage. The purpose of this letter is to make the business community more aware of the city's sign rules and regulations. This is the first step before we would actually go out and do a little education in terms of contacting folks who do not have proper or illegal signs. We're trying to get the word out and get the education and get compliance before we would ever get to the point of actually having to threaten citation. So that's the goal, this is the first step. So that letter was sent out last week, and I believe a copy was given to the members of the council. So moving forward on that. On the medical cannabis, City Attorney and I met today, we're finalizing those decisions. Tomorrow, we will be contacting the applicants that are going to be invited for a interview and also letting those know forward, also letting those know that won't be going forward with the process, so that will be, that will be made public tomorrow, and the applicants will be, will be informed on that. Also, moving on, staff, in case you were wondering, we are still in the process of trying to work out the purchase of the vacant lot at Grand and Signal, so that, that has not gone away. It is moving forward and appears to be moving forward now expeditiously, and we do not see any snags at this point. The, the challenge there was trying to get the title, the clean title secured, and we actually had to go and utilize a title service company to get that cleaned up. So it's been rather frustrating and required a bit of back and forth with myself and the city attorney's office, but we've stayed on it, and so appreciate the help of Matt's firm in keeping that deal moving forward, so.
I have a question on that. As I recall, that said, the funding source had not been identified. Where's the money coming from? That's about a million, three per acre.
It was a, it's a 200,000 purchase.
Right, but you typically, compute that to an acre of land. It's, it's a pretty high price per square foot, and I was just curious as to the source of the money as well as the purpose.
Oh, I should know that off the top of my head, but I'm sorry, it's, it's late and I'm just, it's just not coming to me, so.
We already earmarked the funding source for that, didn't we?
Yes, we certainly did, but that's not his question.
You what?
There was funding, as I recall, in the previous years, or the current year fiscal, current fiscal year's budget for it.
Right, but in the, in the council action, sitting in the audience, it didn't say that in the report, so I don't know that the public knows what the sources, nor do I, so that's, so we can.
We'll get the answer to you.
Yeah.
We'll get the answer to you in the council.
Yeah, thank you.
Make a quick note here. And then, so this is somewhat getting into future agenda items, but the neighborhood planning effort, we reached out to the consultant, they're willing to come and give a presentation on where we're at and where council would like to go at no charge, so we just need to work out a date. If council would like to see that, come back, we'll bring that forward as soon as we can coordinate a date with the consultant. This is the, the neighborhood planning effort. It has been stalled out there for a while, and we'd like to get the consultant back so that he can present to the council where it is, what they've done, and possibly some options on, in terms of going forward on that.
Mayor Johnston, could I comment on that?
Well.
No, no, it's just, when Steve's done, I just have a closing comment.
That contract obviously is expired. Weren't there deliverables included in that contract, and haven't we basically paid for those deliverables that have yet to be received?
That will be addressed in his presentation to council.
Okay, and he, but it's clear that there'll be no financial obligation-
Yes, sir.
-to the city for them to come here and make that presentation.
Absolutely. It's been made perfectly clear.
Okay, you said it on the front end.
Um, excuse me.
I have one more question, if you're ready. But go ahead.
Oh, well, I'll keep going through my list then. So also, we, we did put out the request for proposals for the cultural resources.
One of my questions, thank you.
So that is, that has been out, and I believe council members also received a copy of that. I believe we emailed that out to you. It's also up on the city's website, so that is up, and that will be coming back to city council for the selection. I wanted to point out, give some kudos to our deputy city clerk, Gail Davis. She's been working night and day to get the city caught up on the minutes. Through tonight, we got through April 1st, and I believe she's working on getting the next two sets to us on May 9th, so that would get us caught up in accordance with the plan that the, the city clerk and I had worked out a couple of months ago, so we've stayed on that, and all the credit goes to Gail for all her extra work on that. And then, another long-awaited project, the skate park lights. I haven't had a chance to get by there and take a look at it, but I, my understanding is that they are cleared to go, and I believe they've started to do that work on that. I haven't had a chance to get out there and take a look at it. But again, Skate Ojai is, is working on that improvement, and we're very, very eager to see that done and get that accepted in the city, and we'll certainly need to do something special for the recognition on that one, when that gets closer. And that is all I have, thank you.
I just had a question. They're having the corporate games right now in the county, and why come we don't have a team?
I don't think we got invited.
Well, it's the corporate games. I'm, I'm at the county yesterday, today pulling permits, and they're ranting and raving about their softball team.
Well, I'll-
So I wanted to bring it back and say, well, I'd like to be able to rant and rave about our softball team.
All right, I'll-
Next year, let's get in the corporate games. Let's, let's, let's do something, yes.
I, I think I have a staff person who has some experience in that, so you got it.
Okay, Bill?
Mayor John, uh, thank you, Mr. Johnston. Are you, Steve, are you ready for councilperson Blatz and myself to try to get together with you just on an orientation meeting with respect to the Chaparral School?
Absolutely, and I'm glad you brought that up. I actually, if I would, kept thinking I would have put that on my list, so yes.
Okay, do you, how do you want to initiate, you want to initiate that with Amber set up?
Sure, I'll have Amber. You bet, I'll make a-
About when we could meet and just start talking about that.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Okay, is that, okay, we're now on future agenda items. Does anybody have anything specifically that they want to?
What is our schedule for beginning the budget review process for next fiscal year?
So the, the first discussion item is scheduled for May 23rd.
Okay.
And we're looking at having a budget workshop the first Tuesday in June, so that would be an off week, an, a non-regular meeting. So as part of the schedule, we're, and I think we'll probably need that, that would be a 6:00 PM special meeting. That's our recommendation for a Tuesday, June 6th. And then-
For work to be completed by the 2nd. We'll probably, that, in other words, it has to, we have to have something passed by June 30.
Right.
Yesterday, we had to do interim.
Right, we actually-
Nice to avoid that.
Yes, we actually have on the schedule, uh, I think in, maybe a bit ambitious, but I think it's good, at least it's a good way to go forward, we actually have the schedule set for the budget adoption on June 13th. So give us a little bit of built-in cushion there.
Okay, but to start the process with, with respect to council on the 23rd of-
Correct, right.
Is that enough time? I mean, you don't, in other words, you don't want to have any, any preliminary review of where we were for this fiscal year, what we are looking forward to? I'm just asking, do we think we're, that's okay in terms of a schedule to get it done?
We think so. Finance director, I think that, that's sufficient. If, if council has concerns on that, we, we can certainly look at something different.
I guess my, my, my question would be if all the commissions have been notified and, and all of the individuals that have concerns regarding budgets in the community.
I will verify that. I know that we talked about it at staff meeting, not this week, but the week before, so thank you for that reminder. I will make sure that that has been communicated out.
And then, my only, are, William, are you, are you done?
Yes, sir.
My only question is, again, I'm lost on this agenda. If two council people would like to bring an additional, uh, item up to the agenda, is it still two, two, two council people still have that? Or did we say no, we were gonna just make it three and always set that agenda at, at the council session? I, I just wasn't clear.
Well, you know, one of the things we talked about at the priority setting thing was to go over our protocols. The protocols is what you described. Two people are the mayor and the city manager, put it on the agenda. Then we got into, at least would concern me a bit, when I would see the emails going back and forth, and they would say three members of the council want something that was never brought up in the council meeting, which then teeters on the line of Brown Act. So I think Bill was thinking that if we had this as a regular, we, we approve the agenda when we start our meeting for the evening, and then we conclude by everybody having, if they've got anything. It doesn't mean that if something were to come up that you didn't think about tonight that you couldn't still follow the old protocol, but-
Right, I, I just want, I just wanted to be, you know, some clarity on that. And again, we, we had discussions with our city attorney about any emergency and what defines that, and obviously, those might supersede the standard protocols. That's why I just wanted clarity, that's all.
My only concern with the agenda, it doesn't have to be a problem, but the city manager and the mayor sit down and attempt to figure out the timing on everything and fit it in. And I know that in this town, everything is, you know, priority one, let's get it done now, and then we tend to trail, and we get past 10:30 and nothing happens. So it's a, it's a balancing act between trying to come up with a reasonable number of items on the agenda, which the city manager's got a pretty good handle on, whereas we, as the people who are shoveling stuff at the city manager, it makes it difficult sometimes. But right now, this seems to be working, and I think the idea of having a little discussion at the end of each meeting, so-
It's an opportunity for the majority of us to express a priority.
Right, right. So if anybody's got anything they, they want, otherwise we'll kind of lean to the city manager.
The other thing it does is it gives an opportunity of some time. If we decide we want to have something on the next agenda, we've got the city manager here, we've got the mayor here, we can talk about whether or not we can really get it on the next agenda.
Right, right.
Now let us get out of session, and four days from now, two of us say we want to have something on the next agenda, it makes it really difficult.
Right.
Yeah, because the protocol is, is two people, two members of the council can put something on the agenda, but not which agenda.
Right.